One minute to air, the livestream has started. Thirty seconds.
Good evening, Durham, North Carolina, Bull City. Good evening, good evening, everybody. Happy Monday to all of those who are joining us virtually and to all who are in the audience. We have a full house tonight to do the people's business and we are glad to be in this space in one-on-one City Hall Plaza, in our council chambers. We're all in our places with our bright and smiling faces this evening. We welcome you to-
Recording in progress.
-City Council meeting, Monday, June 6, 2020, at 7:00 PM. We have a full agenda tonight and the first order of business would be for us to have a moment of silent meditation. Think about being kind to each other tonight. Thank you all for that. We now ask Councilwoman Freeman if she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
It is your practice to do so and join us and stand for the flag. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you will call the robe.
Mayor O'Neal.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Porter Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
We have four ceremonial items tonight and we will take them in the following order: The Pauli Murray Center Day proclamation, the Men's Health Month proclamation, Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day proclamation, and Kindness Month. And we will start with Councilwoman Johnson, who will read our Pauli Murray Center Day proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. It's my honor to read this proclamation in honor of Pauli Murray. Whereas Pauli Murray was born in 1910 and grew up in Durham as part of a prominent African-American family, including brothers Robert and Richard Fitzgerald and longtime Durham Public School teacher Pauline Fitzgerald Dame; and whereas Pauli Murray became a nationally-known historian, educator, lawyer, poet, and activist who demonstrated courage in their lifelong struggle for justice for African-Americans, women, and members of the LGBT+ community; and whereas Pauli Murray was an acclaimed author of Proud Shoes: The Story of an American Family, which offers an unprecedented description of early Durham and the Fitzgerald family; and whereas Pauli Murray was a founder of the National Organization for Women and coined the term Jane Crow in recognition of the interrelated discrimination faced by Black women; and whereas Pauli Murray was the first Black woman to be ordained an Episcopal priest; and whereas Pauli Murray's legacy has inspired the Pauli Murray Center for History and Social Justice to be established to lift up Murray's life and legacy of human rights activism and preserve the family home now designated a national historic landmark. Now therefore I, Elaine M. O'Neal, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 18, 2022, as Pauli Murray Center Day in Durham and hereby commend its observance to all residents. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham this the sixth day of June 2022. And I'll be presenting the proclamation to Barbara Lau, the Executive Director of the Pauli Murray Center.
Thank you all so much, and we'd like to invite all of you to the Pauli Murray Center anniversary on June 18 at our site, 906 Carroll Street, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I was invited to offer an encouragement on why we should celebrate Pauli Murray in Durham. I talk a lot about preserving culture. We want to just, we don't want to just preserve the culture, we want to perpetuate the right kind of culture. And Pauli Murray is someone who continues to not only inspire me and encourage me, but challenge me to tell the truth, to face the truth, and to use the truth to be creative. And so I'm hopeful that you all will join us, as Barbara mentioned, June 18 on Saturday. We'll be celebrating all day, 10:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we're so grateful to have the legacy of Pauli in Durham to champion preserving culture and perpetuating that culture as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Wish to extend profound thanks to her honor, the mayor, for allowing us to share in the coolest prerogative of her office, one of them, and that is reading these proclamations. I'm very honored tonight to read a proclamation for Men's Health Month. I wanted to ask, Mr. Elbert Dorsey is in the chamber, if he would join me. Proclamation for Men's Health Month. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas COVID-19 variants continue to spread across the country, with the Centers for Disease Control reporting that males are more likely to die from this pandemic, encouraging safe behaviors, including social distancing, wearing masks, and being vaccinated will help stop the spread of COVID-19. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing the rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventative healthcare can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings, fathers who stay connected to their children and maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models with happier, healthier children. And whereas the National Men's Health Awareness Period is a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventative health practices; and whereas Durham's Men's Health Month focuses on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, and prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas the residents of this city are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now therefore I, Elaine M. O'Neal, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as Men's Health Month in Durham and encourage all residents to pursue preventative health practices and early detection efforts throughout the year. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham this the sixth day of June 2022. Mr. Cole.
Good evening. Again, my name is Elbert Dorsey and I'm proud to be here. Thank you so much for this proclamation. I'm chairman of the Men's Health Council that's sponsored by the Durham County Public Health. Our group is here, we have several outmenus here, it's about 50 of us, but I would like for them to stand first, please. And we also- I would also like to give our sponsor, the Director of Public Health, the good brother Jenkins here, I'd like for him to be recognized, and also for- Joyce Page, who is our coordinator, who established this program back in 2014. So on behalf of the officers and members of the Men's Health Council, thank you for this proclamation for men's health. There's a tremendous health disparity in our country. African-American men suffer the worst health of any racial group in America, they have the lowest life expectancy and the highest death rate for specific causes of all other racial and ethnic groups. The council members represented are by numerous backgrounds, from numerous backgrounds. We share a common mission: to educate, inspire, and lead men to lead their best lives to reduce existing health disparities. We're fortunate to have a council who has been involved with over 50 health forums and conferences. We partner with health institutions, fraternal groups, crime prevention organizations, veteran groups, churches, senior living residents, Housing Authority, the Durham Parks and Recreation, the Durham Police Department, North Carolina Central University, Duke University, and Naval Associations. We also have covered 2,000, about 2,000 miles doing community walks on a monthly basis. And I will pass and leave some information here that will give you all our next walk, which is on the 18th of June, and would like for you all to participate if you would. We're here to recruit African-Americans to participate in research studies in which Black men and women are historically unrepresented, volunteered at health screenings and health awareness events, as the one we just got involved with this past weekend at Lincoln and at Duke for colon, colon cancer. Trained leaders and subsequently lead over 30 evidence-based disease management workshops, and we've awarded scholarships to two graduating seniors active in our council. We are recruiting young men from high school during their sophomore years to be with us for their next three or four years so that we can give them information about how important it is for them to be thinking about their health at an early age. In closing, I invite everyone to join us on Saturday, as I mentioned, June 18, at North Gate Park from 9:00 to 10:00 for our annual Men's Health Walk. The walk will be led by Jeff Fort, the city's Parks and Recreation Departments, and copies of the announcements will leave there here with you all. Again, thank you for recognizing the council and getting to know more about us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and I would ask if our Public Health Director, Mr. Rod Jenkins, would come. I did forewarn him that I was going to ask him, since he's here tonight, to give us a brief update on COVID in Durham, North Carolina, if he would allow us to take a moment to do that, so that he can continue on with his evening.
Just for you, Mayor O'Neal, just for you. Good evening, everyone. To Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, my man with those beautiful bow ties, and the rest of the council, I thank you all for having us. Thank you for bestowing this special honor on the Men's Council, a very special group led by a special woman in Joyce Page. Just know that we're monitoring COVID-19 very closely, as we've been doing all along. Our case rates have fluctuated within the past couple of weeks, and the ironic thing about it is case rates have been going down, and they were going down for the past two weeks, but then we became a little bit higher in our hospitalizations. So as a direct result, we went from that yellow to orange. Nevertheless, I know that for the most part, I've been a little under fire because everyone wants us to reinstitute indoor mask mandates. However, I know that Durham is a very informed, well-educated community, and we've been in this pandemic moment for well over two and a half years. You all know what to do. You all know what to do. You know how to follow the guidance of the CDC, and we certainly admonish you to do that. But again, I have committed to Mayor O'Neal and Chair Brenda Howerton that when my team of epidemiologists and data scientists tell me, hey, Mr. Jenkins, it's getting a little bit bad out there, we certainly need for you to have those conversations. I have assured leadership at the city and the county that I will do just that. But we do have some good news, and I'll be real brief. COVID booster shots are approved for kids as young as five years old and up, and we're offering these shots at our clinics. That is reason to clap. These shots are available, we are fully staffed and we're ready to go. But in sum, I just admonish this listening audience to do a couple of things. Normalize yourself. We know that COVID-19 is not going anywhere, so you need to really stay prepared. These waves are going to come, so you need to make sure that you're prepared and ready, just like you would do for a weather event. We need, we know that vaccinations and boosters are the surefire way to continue to get us out of this COVID experience, but we still need more people to get vaccinated, we need a lot more people to get boosted. And we certainly have other tools, including therapeutics, that will help us to fight this fight. But nevertheless, Durham Public Health remains on the ready. Thank you for this opportunity to really speak to COVID-19 and happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. We appreciate all that you do for Durham County. Thank you so much, and thank you for all of the gentlemen who came tonight. Bull City strong, always.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and my team, our team, city council members. Good evening. Good evening to the Durham residents, the advocates. I love it, I like to see this. I am your new City Council Woman, Monique Hoesley-Hyman, and this is my first time that I will be reading a proclamation, so. I will be reading the proclamation for Tourette Syndrome. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disease, disorder characterized by involuntary motor and vocal tics, and whereas Tourette Syndrome is often accompanied by mental health disorders such as ADHD, OCD, learning disabilities, and anxiety; and whereas Tourette Syndrome and tic disorder affect 100 children, more than 22,800 school-age children in the state of North Carolina are dealing with Tourette Syndrome. And although some of these cases are aided by medication, there is no standard treatment or known cure for this disorder. And whereas there is an important need for more professional help and interest and expertise and to identify counsel and treatment for people with Tourette Syndrome, a disorder that is often misdiagnosed and misunderstood. And whereas positive actions to assist children and families living with Tourette Syndrome would result from a broadening of public and professional knowledge and acceptance of Tourette Syndrome, and whereas Tourette Association's Greater Carolina Group is actively providing service to families, educational law enforcement, and educators, and supporting efforts to better understand the signs and the treatment of Tourette Syndrome. Now therefore I, Elaine M. O'Neal, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 4, 2022, as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day in Durham, and hereby encourage understanding, compassion, and acceptance for all of the residents who deserve and need support to break the stigma that surrounds Tourette Syndrome. Witnesses by my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham this 24th day of May 2022, Elaine M. O'Neal, Mayor. Is that, are they here? Well, we will keep our- How are you?
I'm going to be honest here, I feel kind of unprepared with everything that everybody else has been saying. I wrote like one paragraph. Okay. So as Durham-
I totally understand.
As Durham presents June 4 as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day, I'd like to say a few words as to why I think it's so important that we have more awareness for Tourette Syndrome. Having a disability, especially being a young person who has a disability, it's such a lonely experience, especially when you have something like Tourette Syndrome, which is so stigmatized, so stereotyped. It often leads to social isolation for many people and feeling alone, not having many friends, and things like that. You can often feel like nobody understands you and like you're never really going to fit in. Your increased awareness will lead to our increased acceptance, and I think that is so important for so many people. So thank you so much to the City of Durham for doing this, it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Good evening, Bull City. Last but not least, greetings from, to you all tonight. During my State of the City address, I welcome all of Durham to get more engaged with our city. I shared the story of my grandmother, Cora O'Neal, who on the West End community taught young girls in our neighborhood how to quilt and to bridge generational gaps and to bring our community closer together. She cared for young people and she showed us kindness. Just last week, I was at the season opener of the Durham Triple Play League, that's a baseball little league organization started by Ms. Pat James, a Durham mother who wanted to continue giving young men the opportunity to play in a summer baseball league after the program was canceled. She has served her community well, thousands of young men, she's shown them kindness. So and over the last three years, you know, we as a city, as a state, we've experienced many things that could really leave us disheartened from the global pandemic that we're still dealing with, that has killed millions of people, to the violence that plays our own city, our county, our state, our nation, our country, our world, to supply shortages across industries and economic uncertainty. But you know, we are still resilient and we still remain hopeful. One of the things that has bothered me since I've become mayor, though, I have to be honest, that I was not ready for, is sometimes the sheer meanness of people. I've been called everything from a piece of S to being insane, to people waking up early in the morning, letting vitriol out on the internet, and that's not just happened to me, but it's happened to our colleagues, my colleagues as well. And more importantly than that, and sad, is that it's not only happening for these elected officials, but when I went to a mayor's conference this last week, this past weekend, at the mayor's only meeting, the mayors were talking about how people are really just mean, where they have been threatened, and that part of the event got the most applause from all of the mayors about how people are treating public servants. And then when I turned and I think about all our city employees who work really, really hard, and some of the things that have happened to them from people on my watch, has led me to declare that we have to fight back against meanness and nastiness. You can be, as Dr. Monique said, you can disagree, but you don't have to be disagreeable. And so I am declaring May, June, and July kindness months in Durham, because the only thing that kills hate is love, the only thing that negates meanness is kindness. And I think we just have to be intentional about being kind to each other. We're not supposed to all agree. We're all supposed to have a voice, but that voice doesn't have to have a prick to it. It doesn't have to stick you, it doesn't have to hurt. And so I'm asking that we all think about that, that we are intentional about giving a stranger a smile, that we go out of our way to think about how we can be kind to each other. Durham is an open and loving and inviting community. We welcome all people and we celebrate our diversity that has divided other communities. Kindness is contagious, and if we spread it around Durham, we spread it in our own neighborhood, in our own homes, even if we spread it to ourselves, we can continue to build together and make Durham a better place for generations to come. We have to combat this nastiness that has permeated all walks of our life, and we have to be intentional about that. In life, we make many decisions, and some of them we will leave wishing we made a better decision, a different choice, but choosing kindness is something we will never, ever regret. So let's spread it during the months of June and July and thereafter, in honor of that W.G. Pearson class that I spoke to who gave me that idea, each month we will have a virtue that we will talk about, from patience, faith, grace, joy, peace, in honor of that little class, those classrooms that taught me that we still can learn something very basic every day that it never gets old. So whereas our daily lives are filled with information regarding crime, violence, and disaster, often causing feelings of helplessness, and whereas the many daily acts of kindness that occur in our community are largely inconspicuous and unobtrusive, and by recognizing these acts of kindness, all members of our community will be made aware of the importance of being kind to each other throughout the year. And whereas the Purpose of Kindness Month is to remember the simple day-to-day acts of kindness that enable Durham to be a kinder, safer, and more secure place to live, work, and play, and whereas the City of Durham honors those, no matter how young or old, who make a positive difference in our community and our world. Now therefore I, Elaine O'Neal, Mayor of the City of Durham, the best city in the United States of America, do hereby proclaim the months of June and July 2022 as kindness months in Durham, and I hereby urge all residents to participating, to participate in spreading kindness and practicing respect, generosity, patience, and consideration of others at all time. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham. This I sign it on the 25th day of May. I would like to take the opportunity to dedicate this to the people that I think are the hardest working people and who represent the hardest working people in the city, my colleagues on the city council, Attorney Kim Rayburg and her staff, City Manager Wanda Page and her staff, along with all her deputy city managers, our clerk, Donna Schreiber and her staff, and I would ask, I would ask Ms. Bertha Johnson to receive this on the behalf of all those employees who work really, really hard, and I know she's looking really, really shy, because she's always really, really shy, but tonight I put her on the spot- shy, because she's always really, really shy, but tonight I put her on the spot for being kind.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neal, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
We now turn to our announcements, and I do have one announcement tonight. June is also LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and we give a shout out to everybody on behalf of Gay Pride Month in Durham, North Carolina. All right, and I will turn it over now to any other announcements from my colleagues. That is your opinion, and you are certainly entitled to it, and so here we go. And Ms. Peterson? We are not gonna do right about that, right now. We will celebrate Pride Month.
Ms. Peterson, you're out of, you're out of order, ma'am, you're out of order.
We're gonna ask you if you need to say comments, that you not do them at this time. Thank you. All right, now. Anybody else have any announcements?
I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you, and thank you, happy pride, everyone. I just wanted to, we, we had a quick comment from our Public Health Director about the COVID situation here in Durham, but I just wanted to also say a few words about the, our current high status and the CDC recommendations for communities where the COVID-19 level is high. The CDC recommends that we wear a well-fitting mask indoors and public regardless of vaccination status, including in schools and other indoor community settings, and that if anyone who is immunocompromised or high risk for severe disease, wear a mask or respirator that provides you with greater protection. Consider avoiding nonessential indoor activities in public where you could be exposed, talk to your healthcare provider about whether you need to wear a mask and take other precautions, including testing, have a plan for rapid testing if needed, including access to home tests, and those are still available online through the post office. If you haven't already gotten your free COVID tests, you can go online and order those. And to talk to your healthcare provider about whether you're a candidate for oral treatments like oral antivirals or monoclonal antibodies. If you have household or social contact with someone at high risk for severe disease, consider self-testing to detect infection before contact, and consider wearing a mask when indoors with them. Stay up to date with COVID-19 vaccines and boosters, maintain improved ventilation throughout indoor spaces when possible, and follow CDC recommendations for isolation and quarantine, including getting tested if you are exposed to COVID-19 or have symptoms of COVID-19. I just wanted to read those into, out loud for the community so that anyone who had questions about what the CDC recommendations are for our current status would hear that, and I want to thank everybody who's taking the proper precautions to get us, get our numbers back down and keep all of our community members safe. Feel free to go by the Health Department anytime for your shots or your boosters, and we're all in this together, so let's take care of each other, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, and turn it over to Councilwoman Hyman.
Looking use of this mic. I, I'd just like to say this week, I had the opportunity to be invited to Hillside for their civic action presentations and proposals, and it was amazing to see the wonderful work that the youth were doing, and they, and they actually talked about three areas, they all had to come up with areas and things that they felt that really affected Durham, and the prominent areas was number one, gun violence, two, educational needs, more money for education in schools, and also mental health services. And a lot of the young people that I talked about are really struggling with just needing someone to talk to about different things, and so I just wanted to do a shout out to Mr. Riley and to that 11th and 12th grade that are doing wonderful things, and we need to continue to embrace positivity and uplift when we do see things that are doing well. And one of the other things that I wanted to say is that one of the reasons why I love Durham is because of diversity, thank you.
Looking to my right now, any colleagues have any announcements on this end? Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also just want to make sure I do take a moment and share, I had the privilege of joining our mayor at the 90th Conference of Mayor, and I want to say that it is truly an inspiring opportunity to hear from so many mayors from across the country who are trying to do the work in our cities, and I can appreciate our mayor saying that kindness is, is key. And I, I think that just going a little bit further and acknowledging that there's, through the pandemic, through all the gun violence, the violence in general, how we, how we managed to come together and come up with solutions for our city will matter. I, I do want to say that I, I've been disheartened, and I feel a, a kind of renewal in, in thinking through how we move forward, and I would like to say that there's, there's issues around climate change, there's issues around, like I said, gun violence, there's issues around just everyday living and the sacrifices that folks are making. The fact that there are so many women who have left the workforce is alarming for me, and I don't know how, but I intend to spend the next couple of months trying to figure out how we can address it, knowing that the daycare centers are closing and, you know, many of the, the folks who, who we, who we see harmed the most in this are often who is harmed on a regular basis, I, I'll leave it at that, but, but I, I know that the solutions will come for our community, and so I do want to encourage folks again, as I have in the past, to continue to share your ideas, to continue to share your input, but to continue to also keep in mind that we are all neighbors and that kindness is of value, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. We had a, we had a great time, it was a lot of learning that we did, thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, we will now recognize our city manager, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, I just wanted to thank the Covenant Church and all of the other congregations who invited me out with Councilmember Hyman and Commissioner, County Commissioner Chair Brenda Howerton and Satana DeBarry. We spoke deeply about the issues in Durham around gun violence and some of the things that are, you know, periling our community, and I'm just excited to be amongst a working group rather than just, you know, continuing to just talk about it. So I, I just wanted to thank them for, for that, and all of the congregations, and the, the rainbow of, you know, skin colors that were there to work together on this issue. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. I will now recognize our city manager for any priority items she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the Durham City Council. I have two priority items for you this evening. Agenda item number 13, which is fiscal year 2022-23, third quarter financial report, a presentation was made at the May 19th, 2022 work session. An agenda item number 33, 2022 first quarter crime report, a presentation was made at the May 19th, 2022 work session, and attachment number five was added to address questions during the presentation. That is all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Page. I will now recognize our city attorney for any priority items she may have, Attorney Rayburg.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the City Council. The City Attorney's Office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you so much. I will now recognize our city clerk, Donna Schreiber, for any priority items she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and council members. The City Clerk's Office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you so much. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. All items on the consent agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the council agenda, by the, from the consent agenda, I'm sorry, by a council member or a member of the public, and those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting tonight. I'm going to read into the record the title of each consent agenda item. Item number one, approval of city council minutes. Number two, audit services oversight committee appointment. Item three, the board of adjustment appointment. Number four, the citizens advisory committee appointment. Five, Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board appointments. Six, the Durham Cultural Advisory Board appointments. Number eight, the Durham Performing Arts Center Oversight Committee appointment. Nine, Durham Planning Commission appointments. Ten, the mayor's council for women re-appointments. Eleven, participatory budgeting steering committee re-appointment. Twelve, economic incentives performance audit, April 2022. Item thirteen, FY 2022 through 23, third quarter financial report. Fourteen, the inter-local agreement for the distribution of sales tax between the City of Durham and Durham County. Number fifteen, the North Carolina Records Retention and Disposition Schedule 2021, substantive changes. Item sixteen will be pulled, approval of amendment number one to contract 18597 for legal aid of North Carolina, L.A.N.C., to administer the Emergency Rental Assistance II program. Item seventeen, contract with Fulcher, F-U-L-C-H-E-R, Electric for the construction of N.C. DOT-owned traffic signals in Durham. Item eighteen, the ordinance to change civil penalties for parking violations. Item nineteen, the ordinance to change parking fees. Item twenty, the award of a services contract to Hydromax USA LLC for the Sewer Outfall Inspection Program North Project. Item twenty-two, ordinance amending chapter 70, Article VII of the City of Durham Code of Ordinances, which regulates cross-connection control. Item twenty-three, water distribution system study, hydraulic model update, and Western Intake Partners discharge analysis award to McKim and Creed Incorporated. Item twenty-four, the annual insurance plan FY 23. Item twenty-five, April 2022 bid report. Item twenty-six, I believe will be pulled.
Yes, ma'am.
FY 2021 through 22, capital improvements project, CIP budget amendment, project closeout. Item twenty-seven, resolution for limited obligation bond series 2022. Twenty-eight, cooperative group purchase contract, one fire rescue truck. Item twenty-nine, cooperative group purchase contract, one mid-mountain aerial platform fire truck. Item thirty, 2022 Durham Environmental Affairs Board Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. Item thirty-one will be pulled, resolution supporting the installation of public art at select bus shelters and associated encroachment agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Item thirty-two, the contract amendment number one for FY 2022 through 23, city services and programs for the downtown Durham Municipal Service District between the City of Durham and Downtown Durham, Inc. Item thirty-three, 2022 first quarter crime report.
I have it, ma'am, that's gonna be pulled, Madam Mayor, I remember, we got you.
Item thirty-eight, retain criminal, criminal penalty for violation of Durham City Code Section 26 through 23, noise. That will conclude our consent agenda, but I will read the rest of the agenda into the record. The general business agenda, 21, item 21, award of construction contract to Owens Roofing, Inc., for roof repair and replacements at various Department of Water Management Buildings. The general business agenda, public hearings, item 34, and we have several speakers signed up for this, so this item will be pulled, the public hearing for the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2022 through 23 budget and fiscal year 2023 through 28 capital improvement CIP plan. Item thirty-five, 509 Sharon Road Consolidated Annexation. Item thirty-six, Highgate Commercial Zoning Map Change. Item thirty-seven, the public hearing and proposed economic development incentive agreement with Green Solutions LLC. Did I miss anything, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, I think you got everything.
All right, at this time, we will entertain a hand, a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of those named items that will be pulled.
Don't move, ma'am.
Second.
All right, it has been moved, been moved by Councilman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. We will have to give a hand, a holding up of a hand as a sign of I, our clickers are not working tonight, so all of those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. All of those opposed will have the same. Seeing none, it passes unanimously. All right. All right, we will next move to our general business agenda. Which would, and the first item on that would be item 21, which is the award of construction contract to Owens Roofing, Inc., for roof repair and replacement at various Department of Water Management Buildings. Am I correct?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Pro Tem, members of council, and also to all the residents that are here tonight and online, Don Gurley with the Department of Water Management. The contract before you is a construction contract for the award of the repair and replacement of various roofs at the Department of Water Management facilities at both our wastewater plants and our water plants. With us tonight is Bert Owens, who's the president of Owens Roofing Incorporated. If you recall, Mr. Owens' technology wasn't quite working during the work session, so Mr. Owens is here to answer any questions as well as myself, so, Mr. Owens, if you could please come to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Owens, would you mind just stating your name and address for the record, please?
Owens, business address, okay?
That's fine.
1200 Short Journey Road, Smithfield, North Carolina.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I actually was the one who pulled the item at the work session because I had a couple of questions, I know we had some difficulties and challenges with the technology, so thank you for your willingness to be here in person tonight. I wanted to ask, and my questions really were about some of the work demographics of your company, I was looking at your inclusion report, first, how, how old is your company?
1986.
1986, all right. Do, do you have any black people at all that work for your company?
Presently, we don't. It's, it's, it's definitely not always been that way, it's been in transition over the years. In the nineties, we had a... In the 90s, we had a predominantly black workforce. And they've gradually aged out. And again, going into the 2000s, you know, they started retiring some of them. And we weren't getting, like, younger black men or women to come in and seek the jobs. And whenever we, like, go on LinkedIn or ND or things like that, we don't get respondents, really. We get very few respondents. Most of our people are word of mouth. And over the years, they've transitioned to primarily Latino workers. We had a lady helping us in the sheet metal shop when COVID hit, and she was very good. But then when her kid, she had two kids, when they got, had to stay home, she lost her daycare. And then she had to stay home with them. And another lady was our office manager, a black woman. She had moved here from California, and she worked for us for four years, doing a very good job. But her husband got an opportunity back in California again, and they moved back there. So, we were left without her, but...
And thank you. And let me be clear about my line of questioning. I'm not in any way suggesting that the company doesn't have the wherewithal to do the work and do it in an excellent fashion. And if this, if you were at the work session, this is not an unfamiliar line of questioning that we engage in at our work sessions. One of the values here in Durham is equity and diversity in workforces. And we're very interested in spending folk with money, spending money with folk who demonstrate a commitment to that value as well. You mentioned that it's, folk don't respond when you go to LinkedIn. I'm curious, when your workforce was predominantly black, before it changed to Latino.
Yeah.
Mainly, how did you get that workforce?
You know, I worked for, before I started this business, I worked for another roofing contractor in eastern part of the state. And my first crew I worked on, there were nine people, eight black and me. Then, we transitioned to, I went to a different crew. And then that crew stayed together, and I was on a crew with three or four black guys and five white guys. And we worked together. So, when I started a business myself, a couple of those guys were interested in coming with me. And that worked out. And then, actually, a competitor in Raleigh went out of business. And he had crews there at the time, in the early 90s, were mostly all African-American. And I don't know how they knew about me, but they came to my office one day. And I said, "Yeah, I can definitely put you to work," you know? And they, like, I think the mayor mentioned, W.G. Pearson, in the 90s, we put a roof on Pearson with an all African-American crew, you know? And we've done, and over the years, it's like, recently, for example, we had three really good young black men that came to work for us. And they worked on a crew for a while, but they were in their 20s. And I don't think that's what they were really looking for, you know, to be out in the sun and do that kind of work for the term of their life. I think they were more like, it was more like an interim position for them. I would love for it to have been long-term, because they were learning and progressing and everything, but they saw better things, I suppose.
All right. Just, what type of recruitment efforts do you say? Is it just mainly word of mouth? Do you?
It is. And the, like, the online sites, like I mentioned. And I've gone to Johnson Community College, since it's nearby, and talked to the professors there that teach classes that might transition over into our sheet metal or roofing trades, okay? And they're always real positive. They say, "We're putting our name out there and everything," but we've had no response so far.
Okay, final question. Project managers, four white, I think males, and professional folk, two. How did you find those folk?
Well, my partner and I are the professional folk. We, you know, we started it, so...
That's you and your partner. Who are the four? What about the four?
I didn't have to look far for that one. But the sheet metal project manager came in off the street early on in our history. And he's been here for, like, 30 years or whatever, you know? And the other guy, our senior project manager, we put a roof on Central Prison several years ago. And he was working for the Department of Corrections. And he had some roofing background, and for whatever reason, he wanted to leave. And he approached us and said, we, he's been with us quite a while. And another guy is my partner's son. So, you know, we're kind of small.
Okay. And the fourth guy?
Sir?
The fourth guy?
Okay, the sheet metal guy. Oh, well, my partner's the senior. He leads all the project managers. So, it's...
So, he?
...the Department of Corrections, his son, the sheet metal guy, and my partner, who's that outside guy and we're the inside guy.
So, is your partner counted as one of the professionals and one of the project managers?
I think so, on that list, yeah.
The actuality, is it, though?
That's all we have. You know, I can count in my head.
All right. Thank you for taking the trip to Durham tonight. I appreciate you answering my questions.
Okay, I'm glad to do it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield back.
Are there any other questions from council? All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you both. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve item, agenda item number 21.
Don't move.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Freeman, seconded by Councilwoman Capiero. We will now, again, raise our hand, your left hand, as a sign of affirmation at this time. All those in favor, raising the right hand. All of those opposed will have the same right. All left hands are raised, that pass, that vote passes unanimously. All right. We now continue on with, I believe, our general business agenda, public hearing, number 34, which is the public hearing for the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2022, 23 budget and fiscal year 2023, 28 CIP Capital Improvement Plan. And we have Mr. Johnny Law, who is here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. My name is John Law. I'm the Director of Budget and Management Services. This item is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2022, 23 budget and fiscal year 2022, 28 Capital Improvement Plan. All required public hearing commitments were fulfilled with this item and are ready for review. And I will open the floor to public comments.
All right. We have a number of folk who are here tonight. Mayor Protem will be handling those persons in order. We are going to limit our comments because we have quite a number of folk to two minutes each. And Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, with your permission. We have folk that have signed up virtually, but I also noticed that a couple of the cards, I think some of those folk who signed up virtual are actually in chamber as well. So, we will start with the list of folk that have signed up virtually. Madam Clerk, and if you hear your name and you're actually in chamber and you'd like to speak here tonight, would you just indicate that you're here when you use your name and when you hear your name? And that would help us. I'm going to begin the public hearing with the first name I see on our pre-registered virtual list, which is Larissa Seibel. And Madam Clerk, if you, is she in a chamber? All right. Madam Clerk, do you see her in the queue? If you would make her hearable, please. Ms. Seibel, can you hear us?
Hello?
Good evening, Ms. Seibel. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Good evening. Thank you for being with us. You're the first speaker in our public hearing. You have two minutes. You would just state your name and address for the record, and then you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Larissa Seibel, and I live at 2410 Park Place in Durham. And I'm here on behalf of People's Alliance Housing Action Team to ask for $6 million of rent assistance to help many of the 4,000 households, which could be tens of thousands of people, on the waiting list for Durham rent relief. So important to keep helping people, at least for this one time, to help these 4,000 households. And of course, there are funds with the county that they will be helping, but we need both the city and the county to help families stay in their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Seibel. Next, we have Yalik Majia. Madam Clerk, do you see her in the queue? Am I in the queue? Yalik, can you hear me? Thank you. Yalik or Yalik Majia? Can you hear me? All right, we'll come back. Jennifer Goss, Madam Clerk, if you see her in the queue, would you please make her hearable, unless she's in the chamber? Can I hear? There's Yalik. I think it'd be good if I pulled up the...
I can hear you. Hello?
Yes, good evening. Ms. Majia?
No, this is Jennifer.
Okay. Jennifer, good evening. Ms. Goss, do you have two minutes?
Yes, hi. I just wanted to talk about homelessness and that I have been homeless since April 16th because I was evicted. And the reason that I got evicted was because I had no help with any rent assistance because everybody had ran out of money. So, because of that, I have no place to live and am currently living in a hotel, going through all my funds. And I've tried everything I possibly can in the community to get help, but we just don't have the money in Durham, and we really need it.
Ms. Goss, thank you so much for being with us tonight. You see Ms. Yalik? Ms. Yalik, can you hear me? And please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing the name. Yalik Majia? Can you hear me? It appears that her mic is hot, but... All right, we'll circle back around. Dina Avila, if you... Oh, hi. Did you submit a card as well? You submitted a card as well? But you're here? Okay. Would you mind filling out, if, would you, would you mind filling out a physical card, a yellow card, see the clerk, and we'll add you to the queue of folk who are here in person? Thank you. We're glad you're here. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk. Next, I have Hugh McSherry. Oh, hey, Father, how are you?
All right.
Next, I have Bree Davis. I see Bree Davis in the virtual queue. If you would make her hearable, please. Ms. Davis, good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening, residents of Durham City Council, Mayor Protem and Mayor. Just wanted to remind you while we are in a replication of history. Zora No Hurston came to Durham in the summer of 1939 and experienced the same things that I'm experiencing here in Durham. The exact same treatment of Durhamites that we speak of. I'd like to read an excerpt from her 1950 article, "I Saw Negro Votes Peddled." "Then there was the post-primary promises. They gave unthinking voters visions and made them dream dreams. One young woman worker told me with a confident smile that the day after the election, she would be driving a Cadillac. Just like that, a drab, middle-aged woman told me about the groceries that she had already got and how she had been promised plenty of sheets and towels for her house, which she needed badly. She only wished that she had thought to ask for some new wool blankets, too. Her next-door neighbor had put in some nice, new pink-colored blankets and all. Still, another settled woman was glowing over the promises of two new inner spring mattresses for her beds. She was very excited about the prospect, the wishes of many years coming true at last. 'Oh, no,' she answered my doubts. She was not going to be fooled. She had told the white woman whom she had dayworked for twice a week about it and asked her to please go down to the party headquarters the day after the election and pick out two mattresses for her and have them delivered right away. This voting for what you could get was making me feel sick and sad. The right to vote, to express the will of the individual and affairs of the community, the Commonwealth and the nation, was nowhere to be found in this general talk that was going on all around me. Mayor, Elaine O'Neil, you speak about kindness, and this is what I say to that. You cannot continue the level of arrogance..."
Ms. Davis, thank you. That's your two minutes. We appreciate you tonight. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next I have Marie Hill-Faison. If you would make her hearable.
Hello?
Good evening, Ms. Faison. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Hello, everybody.
Hello, welcome. You have two minutes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. My name is Marie Hill-Faison, and I am speaking in behalf of the people in Durham that are facing evictions. And my personal experience with eviction, I know, is very traumatizing and affects the whole family and the head of the household. So, I just would like to thank you for your continued support for people that are facing eviction and to know that that's the right thing to do, to help these housing insecure people. Because, you know, being in that position is like having one foot on a banana peel. So, you know, it's very, you're balancing a lot of things at one time. And so, we want to help people and show that kindness and send that love. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Faison. We appreciate you being with us. Next, I have Angela Vick Lewis. Madam Clerk, do you see her in the queue?
I don't.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do not see her in the queue.
Very well. We'll move on to Rita McDaniel. Good evening, Ms. McDaniel. Can you hear me? Like, her mic isn't hot.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Welcome. Thank you. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Okay. I have a dream that every man, woman, and child would have affordable housing to live in neighborhoods that are safe, where people do not have to choose between medication gas and other daily life needs. But, oh, I'm not living in a dream. I'm living in reality where there are not enough affordable housing, where people have to choose between the things that I mentioned earlier. I am asking city council if you all would approve the $6 million that is needed to help families who apply for funding to stay in their homes. It costs the city much more to help them than to stay, than to stay in their homes than to start the process over again. It, it tears families apart, causing depression. I would also ask that the city council would really look and to ban the box on rental applications. I talk to people every day who are, who are working 40-hour jobs and still cannot find affordable housing. There are families that consist of a father who shares vacation rights with the mother, married couples who can't afford housing because of their income level, people who have changed their lives around from the past and always continue to follow them. Give these people a chance. We need affordable housing. I live in the, in southwest, south side of Durham, where gentrification has risen the price of living. price of living. I stay in a self-help apartment, but there has been four shootings at the corner store. I have no place to move to. I live on a fixed income. I'm asking that City Council would reach out and provide more affordable housing or the money to, so that we can have more affordable houses without all the stipulations and give people chances. Thank you.
Ms. McDaniel, thank you so much for being with us. Next, I have Jen Eisenman.
Yes, hello, thank you very much. My name is Jen Eisenman.
Thank you, you have two minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. I live in Durham, I am with the People's Alliance, and I am asking, I'm advocating for $6 million of the budget to go towards rent relief. There are many reasons why. The one I'm personally going to talk about is there are 4,000 households currently applied for rental relief, but the rent, all of that money is gone, and they are being evicted as we speak. And a lot of, they are able to appeal, but one of the conditions is that they must pay rent during this appeal process, which can take one to two months. If they can get the help that they need, most households that get assistance within these one to two months and are able to have the time to get legal aid, have positive outcomes, and are, many are able to stay in their homes, or they have time to find other places to live. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eisenman, we appreciate you. Next, I have Mr. Juwan Langley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor O'Neal, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Good evening, Ms. Langley, you have two minutes.
And Madam City Manager Page, I come before you tonight because we are in a crisis, and that crisis are our boys and young men of color. And I've heard each one of you, as many, as well as members of our community, make statements about the ongoing gun violence, the low academic proficiency, the college and career readiness, the short and long-term suspensions of our boys and young men. But the question before us is, what are we gonna do? The budget is a moral document that reflects the values of our community, and I don't see boys and young men of color represented in this budget. And we can change that by investing $1 million to come up with a plan and strategy for how we're gonna improve life outcomes for boys and young men of color in our community. They deserve an opportunity to receive educational advisory support in order to navigate, to equip themselves with better information, access to work-based learning, and effective guidance to make thoughtful and informed decisions about steps toward a rewarding career. We have to manifest our verbal commitments with actionable, tangible commitments in terms of how we spend our tax dollars and what we invest in. We can change the trajectory of boys and young men in this community. The economic landscape, as Mayor Pro Tem Middleton made the statement on matter this afternoon, we know what's coming. But the question is, are we prepared? Are we making the right investments? So my request tonight for council is twofold. One, I thank the manager for including a $400,000 investment in the Durham Youth Work Program, and I'm asking the council to up that to a million dollars, because this summer, we were not able to, to serve every student that applied for that program.
Second, thank you so much for being with us this evening. Next, I have John Talmadge. Madam Clerk, if you would make him hearable? Mr. Talmadge, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, you have two minutes.
Thank you, I'm John Talmadge, I live at 910 Verge Street here in Durham, and I'm here tonight as the Executive Director of Bike Durham. I want to express our enthusiastic support for many items in the manager's proposed budget that would increase staff capacity to deliver sidewalk, bicycle facility, and transit projects more quickly, including the increases in staff salaries, which hopefully will end up retaining employees longer and attracting employees to the vacant positions. And also appreciate the inclusion of about $6.2 million in new local spending on sidewalks, trails, bicycle facilities, safer crossings, restriping of streets. And appreciate the scoring method that includes racial equity more explicitly, you know, arriving at those, those priorities. I do want to call attention to one concern we have, which is that the, three of the positions in the Transit Department needed to deliver on many of the transit-related projects relied on funding from the transit tax, and our understanding is, at this point, there is not agreement by the other parties that get to vote on the transit tax to include that funding. And we just urge the city to, and the council, to play a collaborative and active role in negotiating with county commissioners. We made a similar request to the county commissioners this morning as they considered these transit projects. As, as residents, we're paying the same taxes, whether they go to the city or they go to the county, and what we, what matters to us is not which pocket that the money comes out of.
Mr. Talmadge, thank you so much for your comments this evening. Next, we'll have Meredith Wilkinson, I do see her in the queue. Good evening, Ms. Wilkinson, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hello, good evening, thank you for being with us, you have two minutes. Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, the floor is yours, you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Meredith, I'm actually a new resident here in Durham, I've only been here for a few weeks, so thank you for the time. I am here because after being here just for a few weeks, I've learned and been disheartened to hear about some proposed funds in the budget for a pilot program for a technology called ShotSpotter here in Durham. And from what I have read and heard and actually experienced, having lived, lived in a city where this technology was implemented in Chicago, I know that this technology is ineffective and actually causes more harm than good. And so I am here this evening to ask that the funds not be allocated for this program and be put to something that can actually make our communities safer and healthier. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wilkinson, for being with us tonight. Next, Quaid Gallagher.
Hi, can you hear me?
Good evening, sir, thank you for being with us, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Quaid Gallagher, and I'm speaking against ShotSpotter coming to Durham. ShotSpotter is a bad faith actor looking to profit off of our worst fears and prejudices. They lived in Chicago, which also has ShotSpotter. I can tell you that it does not work, does not make us safer, because it irreparable harmed the communities, especially the communities of color where they're most displaced. I argue with my older man in Chicago against this technology, but once it is in, it is very difficult to get rid of, and people use it for their election, reelection campaigns. I urge City Council to reject creating a surveillance state with ShotSpotter and reject the lies and profiteering that they cause using fear and pain. I urge you to put that money towards affordable housing and other initiatives, let other people off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, so much for being with us this evening. Manju Radindran, I think I saw my, hey, did you fill out a card? Did you fill out a card? Okay, we'll get, when we come to the folks in the physical in the chamber, thank you for being with us.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Hunter King is not in the queue.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, can we try, is Yalik still in the queue?
No, sir.
Okay. If they should come back, if you would alert me. All right, friends, at this time, we're going to turn to the folk who are here with us in your chamber, we're very glad to have you with us tonight for this very important public hearing on the budget. I'm going to call five names at a time, and if you would, just give yourself some space and, and line up along the railing so you can approach the podium. We ask that you would state your name and your address for the record, and then you will have two minutes. And I'm very pleased to welcome to the podium of the first five speakers Gwen Silver, James And I'll do, I'm sorry, Erin Bueno as well. Good evening, you have two minutes.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. Gwen Silver, 302 Sapphire Drive. I actually signed up to speak on Consent Item Number 26, which is still part of the capital improvement project. It's the budget amendment to close out the 20, 21, 22 capital improvement project. But specifically, I want ordinance number 15820, which you did pull, but that funding is for the Hoover Road Athletic Park. So last week, we learned that that park is gonna be renamed Merrick Moore, and we don't have a problem with that, but we want the money that's appropriated for the Hoover Road Athletic Park to be moved over to the other side of the park to be, to be used to renovate wheels, whatever is necessary to get that facility open. And I think according to the proposal, it's $12,769. We've talked to members in the community, they want the park, that part of the park to be open and to be operating this summer. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much for being with us. My name is Silver, Mr. Chavis, you have two minutes, sir.
Good afternoon. I, too, would like to say thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for once I came in here to discuss, and you finally said something that all of us that's been working out in the streets have been saying. We are tired of seeing our taxpayer money being waste with no substance. And you made that very clear for us to understand the wastefulness of our taxpayer money. So I want you to understand, and all others, Hoover Road Park was not the first name that was asked. It was asked for Mertmore Park, and it was denied. And now, the sign Hoover Road Park has been taken down so that Mertmore Park can be put up. That's to split our community workers, because they asked first for that park to be named Mertmore, and they did not get it. So I'm asking you all, why y'all think about remove, giving them some more money on that side? And we out here asking for the other side? Think how we feel that's been working on both sides and our rights has been taken away. Wade has refused to give us our rights on both property. He refused to listen to the people of the community, and now he's trying to display to you all his part of it. But I tell you what, I know it all, and I've been here from the beginning. Wade needs to be removed to be understood so y'all can see who is really needs to be heard. The community of people are being denied.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. Raquel Baptiste? All right.
Victoria, nobody talking to you. My name is Waldo Fenner, I live 1119 Claire in the Street. I had a whole list of things to say, but since you all cut down to two minutes, from three to two minutes, I'm gonna make it real short and sweet. You can't tax your way out of this. What I say to you guys is go back to Gold Triangle and find that $168 million that they misappropriated. They said 157, but it's 168, okay? You gave $21 million to Durham Housing Authority. They didn't spend all that money putting folks in a hotel. Where's that money at? You gave $500,000 to legal aid to fight evictions, what did they win? That money should went to the homeowners or the landlords to come get that money, okay? Now you wanna spend a million dollars for a shot detector. It can't arrest nobody, it can't say stop, hold, freeze, none of those things. Same ones who called you for everything else. A shot's been fired, it's sufficient. Cops don't get no faster or anything else. When I call them to come to my house, they go to the white policeman first, or they come and ask me to show my D. So you need to clamp your police department on that component of it. Second of all, is that instead of you all wanting to spend all this money on a $31 million swimming pool, how about you take that money and say to the senior citizens who are on fixed income, who owns a home, we can put solar panels on your house so you don't have to pay no light bill for the rest, while you're staying there. That saves you money and brings back to the community as well. There's a bike track. A swimming pool doesn't do anything for you at all. You got all these guys running down the street with a bike, with the bikes, nowhere to go. You won't do anything about that, but you want to put them in jail. But you won't arrest your own police department for doing that crooked behavior, okay? And everybody knows what I'm talking about. I can call names if you want me to, but I'm not gonna do that. Mo'Neal said be kind, but you all haven't been kind to us. I didn't vote for you. I didn't vote for you. Don't clap for me, 'cause you're just as guilty as they are, 'cause you voted for this.
Mr. Fenner, thank you so much, sir. Is Rachel Baptist here? I have a card, want to give you an opportunity if you're in the chamber. Erin Bueno? Good evening, welcome, you have two minutes.
Hi, thank you for having me here. My name is Erin, I live in 1111 Georgia Avenue. I'm here to save wheels. So it is my understanding that currently, there is no commitment to saving the facility that was formerly known as Wheels, and I think that is a mistake. I know personally, I have found community at Wheels through Bull City Roller Derby, that's who I'm representing right, right now. And I think we are making a mistake by not listening to the community and saying that this is something that we need. And, yeah, I guess, for me, like, I wouldn't be here if it weren't for the community that I found through Bull City Roller Derby. I know that, like, personally, I am affected by MDD, which is major depressive disorder, and in 2018, when I started skating, part of the reason why I'm still here is because of, like, the community that I have found through Bull City. So, I don't know, I, I think it's important to recognize the mental health benefits of having a facility like Wheels, allowing people to transmute, you know, these, these feelings into something more productive through skating and community. So I think if there's an opportunity to make a commitment financially to save this facility, that should be prioritized. And, yep, that's, that's all I have to say, thank you so much for your time.
Thank, thank you so much for being with us tonight. I'm going to call five more names and ask if those residents would line up along the side. Huggins, thank you, good evening, you have two minutes.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Sheila Huggins, I reside at 2408 Tampa Avenue here in Durham. I'm co-chair of the Friends of Durham. I stand before you tonight, representing the Friends of Durham, to ask you to vote in support of funding for ShotSpotter as a supplemental emergency response tool, for those who are first called to aid, for those who show up to investigate, and in some cases, for those who might serve to bring comfort to residents in our community. Now, no tool is perfect, but we ask that you take the time to see whether this is a tool that would work for Durham. Implement the pilot program here, analyze the resulting data, and then make a final decision. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins, for being with us. Robert Oler, welcome. You have two minutes, sir.
Hello, thank you for your time. Name's Robert Oler, I live at 1401 Gunter Street in Durham. I'm here to talk about the Splash and Play Project and Wheels Skate Park, similar to some people have already talked here. I believe that Wheels Skate Park has been a really just wonderful part of our community as a resource, for a place for gathering, for just a place for activities of people of all different socioeconomic backgrounds, racial background. I am with Bull City Roller Derby, and I know that when we were able to have the first home bout for our league, it brought out a group of over 200 people from the Durham community, an outpouring of support that I haven't seen at many other events, honestly, and it was beautiful to have that many Durhamites out to have such a good time and kind of hang out and enjoy each other's company. I believe that we shouldn't be, while I do, I'm open to the concept and love the idea of bringing new forms of recreation and just having a new gem in Durham city, like a water park or whatever the Splash and Play Project is going to be, I don't think it should be at the expense of an already firmly established community gathering place. So I think that if we could, having some funds allocated towards the maintenance and continued operation of Wheels Skate Park in some form or way would be the best way to go forward with that. That's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Oler, for being with us. Libby Weimer?
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me. My name is Libby Weimer, and I live at 3808 Hillgarden Drive. I'm here first to speak in support of allocating funds and to include saving the rink in the redevelopment project on Hoover Road. I believe that the rink is compatible with also having other facilities, and I think the rink is just a magical, incredible place. I'll share my memories of being at a place that truly represents the diversity of Durham, bringing together people across race, across socioeconomic status, old people, young people, and especially a place that serves many young people in our city. And it's bringing people together in the pure joy of gliding across a beautiful, slick wooden floor. There's nothing like it. It's a really incredible, unique place, and the city has an opportunity to preserve this place for future generations. I've been a part of Bull City Roller Derby for since 2016, and was a founding member of this organization, and I also just want to speak to the fact that we've been a partner to the city in our home bout that Robbie mentioned, also being a partner at the Hill Center. We need wheels to continue to operate as a roller derby league, because we need to have a space that is actually large enough to lay a track and play the sport that we love to play, and to have events for the city like we had in 2019. So please, plan for the future of wheels and the redevelopment of this park. I'd also like to add, with the remaining time that I have, I'd like to speak against having Shot Spotter in our city. I think there's other ways we can allocate our money that would invest in our people and actually keep people safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weimer, so much. Emma Rochan? Good evening, thank you for being with us. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the members of the city council and the mayor for having us and listening to us here today. I am also here speaking about the Splash and Play Facility being developed at the Hoover Road Project, formerly known as Wheels. As another founding member of Bull City Roller Derby, having been with the group since 2016, there's nothing like that facility for this community. A pool is a wonderful way for young folks to have a place to go, but it will be closed for some part of the year. So I would love to see that the city allocate funds to keep the skating rink as part of that facility, both for the enrichment of young folks, as well as like, folks like myself, who truly need that space in order to continue to operate as Bull City Roller Derby. So many rinks across the United States have closed during the pandemic because of lack of funds and lack of attendance, because we were not allowed to be indoors. So all of that information should tell you just how much we need this, now that we're able to sort of be with each other again. While those rinks have closed, so many folks have also bought roller skates, because that was just one of the other ways in which we could enjoy our time while in isolation from each other, and now as we sort of emerge from our pandemic with better resources to keep each other safe, we need facilities like that to continue to practice this way. I was actually encouraged to hear that the city had purchased the facility, as opposed to just letting it go, for hope that it would bring greater access to the community for folks to skate there. And to hear that there's not a plan in the future that necessarily will be maintained hurts me as a community member, and I would love to see that the city consider that we can have both a fun pool facility, an aquatic facility, as well as a skating facility. The space is already there, it takes more energy to destroy than to maintain, and I'd love to see it continue. Thank you so much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Kalen Tuskayama?
Hello.
Good evening, thank you, you have two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kalen Tuskayama, I live at 1401 Gunter Street in Durham, and I am here to speak on keeping the skate rink at Wheels. Unlike an aquatic center, the skate rink provides a year-round activity for community members, as it is an indoor facility. This also means that it provides employment year-round. It is also already equipped with skates and a concession stand, and as Emma mentioned, the costs to maintain are definitely lower than to destroy. Additionally, the skating rink at Wheels Fun Park has been the site of many successful events, including the 2019 Bull City Roller Derby premiere home bout, which hosted more than 300 audience members from around the triangle. This means that it also pulled funds from people around the triangle. The skate rink at Wheels is a Durham institution, shutting it down would force folks who live in Durham to go elsewhere to skate, and thus draw funds away from Durham. The only other indoor skate in the rink, the only other indoor skate rink in the triangle is in Raleigh. We have a unique opportunity to save the skate culture in Durham and draw audiences and funds from elsewhere in North Carolina if we keep the Wheels Fun Park skate rink open. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tuskayama. Thank you so much for giving me on the name faux pas. The next five, Jesse Gibson, Victoria Peterson, Donald Quick, Michael Reynolds, and Keisha Barnett as well, if you would join the queue. Mr. Gibson, good evening, sir, thank you for being with us, you have two minutes.
Thank you, sir. I suggest that the council encourage city administration and Department of Recreation, including its renovation of the Wheels facility, health and safety features that require children, youth, and young adults, and parents to have full COVID vaccinations. Boosters are now available for five to 11-year-old under crime prevention. Patrol and surveillance measured by Durham Police and Sheriff's Department for both ends of Hoover and Sutherland Road during hours of operation. Metal detectives for entrance into the facility. Separate daily hours of operation for children, youth, and young adults, adjusted by seasonal changes. And opening and closing of public schools and holidays affordability. Recruit and encourage the Chamber of Commerce businesses, nonprofits to sponsor financial vouchers to pay for entrance fees for children and youth from low-income families. Advertise and encourage multicultural participation by all ethnic, social, and religious groups, and to include the establishment of a citizen advisory council. If we include some of all of these measures, I believe it will attract all races and income groups. We must use these facilities in ways that help to deter crime, overcome boredom, and save our most vulnerable children and youth from prison, school dropout, and the grave. Thank you.
Mr. Gibson, thank you, sir. Mrs. Peterson, good evening, thank you for being with us, you have two minutes.
Yes. Ms. Mayor, and to all those here in the city council, over the years, when we have meetings, the agenda, the programs, the different funding is always left over there in two books. Now, we're talking about giving various organizations monies. We have not seen that on the website. I would like to just share with the mayor, Ms. Mayor, you're new, we have staff that knows how things should also be done here. Those reports, I would like to know how much money we're going to be giving to the homosexual community, because a few years ago, they was also getting monies. I think you folks call them LGB, but they are homosexuals, they are breaking the law, they are ungodly, and I know, Ms. Mayor, you want us to love everybody. Yes, we will love everybody, but we cannot embrace sin. And the practice of homosexuality is sin, to compare to what the word of God says. I have two minutes to speak. I would like to see that monies going to the police department, because we have all this crime and murdering going on in the African-American community, and we want to give monies to an organization that the state government... And, Ms. Mayor, you are judge.
Excuse me, Mrs. Peterson?
You know the law.
Mrs. Peterson, suspend for a second, we'll give you your time. There'll be order in the chamber, please.
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Because this is called freedom of speech. You can love people, but you don't have to love their sin, just like if there's a young lady out here involving prostitution. I try to talk to them and encourage them. Yes, we love them, but we don't want them selling their bodies.
Add five seconds, please.
We don't want them selling their bodies. So, Ms. Mayor and all other city council members, please stop trying to get this city to embrace homosexuality. We know they're here.
Thank you, that's your time. That's your time, Mrs. Peterson, thank you.
We do not want to embrace this sin.
Peterson, thank you, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donald Quick?
Thank you for being with us, you have two minutes, sir. Good evening to all, our union, my name is Donald Quick, my address is 3415 Freeman Road in Durham, North Carolina. On behalf of our union, UE 150, we're proud, you know, to be here, but this spot shot of fame that's going on, I don't know too much about it, but I know it hasn't worked in other cities, but, you know, whatever decision be made, then that's something we got to live with. But what I do know is, me and my coworkers, we have been shot at, you know, doing our job for the city, and other of my coworkers have been held up, you know? So, I mean, if we really want to put some money into something, let's put some money in to protect, you know, the city workers and people out here going about there every day. I mean, through the pandemic and all that type of stuff. So, you know, like I say, I don't know enough about the technology of it, but from my understanding, it didn't work in other cities. So, you know, if it didn't work there, and the cities are bigger than ours, so I'm kind of saying, well, it's probably not gonna work here. I think we could allocate that money, put it somewhere to try to help some of these youth, you know, talk to them, and, you know, start a program that'll help the youth, because I had a friend of mine, he got killed standing at the bus stop waiting. He was waiting to catch the bus. Mind in this business, we grew up together, we ate at each other's house, you know, our mothers knew each other, and I had to go attend a home going like that, just waiting on the bus. So, you know, my thing to y'all is, whatever decision y'all make, like I say, we gotta live with it, but I pray that y'all would take that money and do something with it that will help our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Thank you, Mr. Quick. Mr. Michael Reynolds? Good evening, sir, thank you for being with us, you have two minutes.
Thank y'all for having us to speak freely. My name is Michael Reynolds, I'm a city employee at General Services in Maplewood and Beachwood Cemetery, and also a member of the Durham City Workers Union, UE Local 150. I stay near Clayton High School, because of things so crazy now, I wouldn't want to get my address out. We work hard, all city workers work hard during the pandemic to keep the city running still now. A lot of us have been working nonstop through it, haven't been home at all, six, seven days a week. With inflation being over 8%, anything less than that is a pay cut for us. Right now, the city manager is supporting the union's proposal for a 4% step pay increase. We thank you for that. However, the market adjustment is only 3% when it needs to be at least 8%. The 7% increase is a pay cut for us, and will only add more stress to our lives and our families. Also, many of our general employee departments are still losing staff, and we know the city saved millions of dollars from vacant positions, and all that we got was more work. Instead of paying us for recognizing this work, the city decided to give $4 million in mid-year raises to the police and fire, where we got nothing. How do you think we feel about that? Lastly, police, our union is proud to be here tonight with the Durham Beyond Police and Friends to oppose the city's spend, almost $200,000 on the Shot Spotter program this year. We know that there is a gun problem in our society, and in our city. However, in other cities, there were tried Shot Spotters, and it hasn't worked, and wasted money led to more black and brown people like us, city workers, and other people getting arrested. The money could be better used to invest in the city workers, and our community needs like, more mental health responders to 911 calls rather than the armed police. And I want to speak on the Shot Spotter, because I have been doing a little bit of investigation myself, like somebody said, in Chicago, they have been getting more daily, 60 falsely alarms daily with the Shot Spotter. That can't say, well, we need more boots on the ground, more people in the neighborhoods that we call hoods, and instead of sitting in the car beside each other every day when you go to the gas station or go to a vacant parking lot, they need to be out and about.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you, sir, for being with us. William Speed Jr.? Good evening, sir, thank you for being with us, you have two minutes. And then Keisha Barnett?
Hey, how you doing? My name is William Speed Jr. I'm a Durham resident and a city employee also. Born and raised here, grew up here, and I love to serve my city, working through this pandemic, and I'm just gonna speak on the employees that are being charged for not uploading a COVID-19 vaccine card by December 31st, 2021. We in this thing together. We here, you know, everybody's here, you know, wearing masks, and we go to the store, we see each other out in public, and, you know, we're still fighting this thing together, trying to get through this thing. So should not one group be penalized for not complying with those actions, it's just not right. Because, you know, having a vaccine being boosted, or whatever the case may be, is a right for the person themselves, but we need, it's a right for themselves. So therefore, we just need a more concrete health plan, where with the numbers and ratings going up, maybe having masks shouldn't be to the discretion of the person, maybe it should just be mandated, and we should just have to deal with it, get these numbers down for us so we could get through this. It's in the same category of being vaccinated or not, or as smoking a cigarette. So therefore, if you're gonna charge someone for not uploading a COVID-19 vaccine card, you should charge a cigarette smoker, because it affects other people in different other ways, the same way that you feel that people are not vaccinated or spreading this virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Speed, for being with us. Ms. Barnett? Good evening, thank you for being with us, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon, good evening, my name is Keisha Barnett. I'm a Durham resident, employee of the city of Durham, and member of the Durham City Workers Union. During the past 27 months of the pandemic, city employees have been negatively impacted in ways that no one could have ever predicted. Collectively, we have endured while grasping for hope for relief from the mental anguish caused by contracting the virus, watching family and friends die from the virus, the financial burden that the pandemic has caused us as individuals, as heads of households, as single parents, as children caring for elderly parents, as disabled employees, as struggling two-parent households, as members of intergenerational households, and as essential workers. The disproportionate impact of the constant stress, safety concerns in and out of the workplace, the increased cost of gas, food, medicine, basic life necessities, medical bills, additional childcare, dependent care costs, increased housing costs, and the additional cost burden of the PPP have been tremendous. It is important for this body to consider the relief that it can provide, and the positive equitable impact it can make in the lives of all city employees while considering this year's budget. Each year, the city workers... Each year, the City Workers Union proposed funding recommendations during the budget process. This year, we made full recommendation to the city manager, and they were to fully fund the general step pay plan, provide an eight percent market increase to account for the eight percent eight inflation rate, provide a 10% hazard premium pay for designated essential personnel, and reallocate unspent funds from the police department budget for city fund workers to fund city workers and community safety and wellness needs. We appreciate the city manager's commitment to fund the general step plan as adopted in 2019. However, the inflation rate currently at eight percent, the proposed market rate increase would not afford the city employees the income necessary to keep up with the cost of living in Durham, nor will it provide the relief we so desperately need and deserve. The city's most essential employees are faced with executing their jobs in a consistent manner.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight and for your comments. Friends who are with us in the chamber here tonight, I've come across a couple of cards where you filled out the information, but you didn't put your name on it. And we want to make sure that everybody has opportunity who wishes to speak, to speak tonight. So, if you do not hear your name called, it may very, and you know you signed, you filled the card out, it may very well be that you omitted, uh, putting your name on the card. So, at the end, we will do an all call again for anyone who has not spoken, since this is a public hearing, who wishes to speak. And if you do not hear your name and you filled out a card, please just indicate, um, you might be one of those folk. All right, Naria Ewell. Stella Adams. Aspen Unwin. Melanie Unwin. And Danette Wilkins. If you folk would kindly just queue up on the side rail. Good evening, thank you for being with us. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nana Ewell. I'm a Durham resident of the Duke Park neighborhood and a macro social worker. I'm here to speak against the proposed ShotSpotter surveillance pilot and to express support for alternative investments brought by other community members. I want to focus first on responding to a few comments made by council members related to the ShotSpotter pilot. If there was an overwhelming amount of data showing that unarmed crisis responders and investments in preventative measures of safety and care were ineffective at increasing community safety, Durham would not have codified an entire department for it just because it's a good idea. I think we should be clear about that. It is not contradictory to highlight differences between proposals for things like unarmed crisis responders, increased mental health and wellness supports, rental assistance, and worker justice initiatives, ideas which came out of proposals and efforts packed with an overwhelming amount of research and data proving their effectiveness versus surveillance technology backed not only by shoddy but insufficient data around its effectiveness. As others have said, the research coming out of the majority of evaluations on ShotSpotter have shown that at best it is ineffective at what it claims to do, detect gunfire. Several reports out of cities like Chicago highlight a high number of false positives. So, false alarms wasting public dollars and resources, sending cops already over police neighborhoods for nothing. Using the "let's get the data for Durham" argument for a technology that has not proven to be successful or even worthwhile in so many other cities is not acting in good faith and is dangerous to the very communities you say you are trying to support through this pilot. You keep saying ShotSpotter is not meant to reduce gun violence, and then in the same meetings, I've heard many of you argue over and over that ShotSpotter is part of a suite of options you hope will address gun violence in Durham. And I'm wondering, which is it? We deserve so much more in Durham than ineffective and potentially harmful expansions of surveillance in our communities. If we agree that we want to end gun violence in Durham, let's invest in measures of preventative safety that we know reduce it. Investing in quality public education, safe housing, rental assistance, eviction diversion in healthcare, expanding job opportunities, worker justice, which can look like meeting the demands of Durham city workers to fund the step pay plan with an adjustment for inflation, reopening the wheel skating rinks where young people have something to do.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening.
But lining the pockets of the ShotSpotter Corporation at our.
Thank you so much. That's your two minutes. Thank you. We appreciate you being here. Stella, Stella Adams? Good evening. Thank you for being with us. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stella Adams. I live at 4128 Cobblestone Place in Durham, North Carolina. I am speaking as a citizen, and I want to say that I generally support the city manager's budget. I think it's greatly improved in terms of using a racial equity lens, and there are a number of, um, key pieces that I think are great improvements over previous budgets, but there's a lot left to do. I want to first shout out to the employees of the city of Durham. I think that the, um, the, the manager put forward what at the time appeared to be an appropriate, um, increase in pay and, um, but inflation is at eight percent. A COLA needs to be at eight percent. So, we really, I'm really at a minute? Okay, so, COLA for the employees. We need public transit to be more efficient, effective, and serving the working people of our city. With gas at five and, five dollars a gallon and going up, and people making seven dollars an hour, it takes all day to put money in the tank. We have to do public transit first, the people of Durham first, Route 9 first. But it's every, every one of, our public transit has got to be a priority over any other type of, um, use of our transit tax and the long-term transit plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Aspen Unwin? Good evening. Thank you for being with us. You have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Aspen Unwin. I live in Carrow, um, but I have been going to the Wheels Roller Rink ever since I moved here in 2016. An old roller rink may seem insignificant to most people, but the community that has thrived and grown here is overwhelming. I represent all of those kids and teens who, without this rink, may grow up in the absence of the lively and loving environment that is the Wheels Roller Rink. By removing it, you're taking away the history and voices of those who've had fun, made friends, held parties, skated, and thrived there. But most importantly, you're taking away the 40 years of culture and family of skaters that has grown along with us as a community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Melanie Unwin? Good evening, and welcome to you. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Melanie Unwin. I am at 113 Lantern Way in Carrow. I am here to speak to ask the city of Durham to direct some of the Hoover Road Park funds towards opening Wheels as a roller rink again. Uh, I'm a parent of children who skated at the roller rink, as well as a member of Bull City Roller Derby. Before COVID hit, we spent a lot of time at Wheels, um, both myself alone and with my kids at the rink. I was able to participate in Roller Derby there, thanks to Bull City Roller Derby, and that is their home rink. We don't have a, a space that we're skating at right now. Bull City is welcoming to all sorts of people, and particularly, I was able to participate despite it, um, being a financial hardship. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to skate. It's an expensive sport. So, I think, I think that having a space for, uh, a group that is very inclusive is important. My 14-year-old and my six-year-old skated there. My youngest, who is three-year-old, is not skating yet, but she took her first steps at Wheels Roller Rink. So, to say we spent a lot of time there is an understatement. It's a huge asset. I would hope that it can coexist with an aquatic center, with a pool, um, especially since it's something that can be open all year long, can be used all year long, um, and can be enjoyed by families. I think it's an asset. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Danette Wilkins? Good evening. Thank you for being with us. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Danette Wilkins, 603 Oakwood Avenue. I'm a Black Latina and yes, queer resident of Cleveland Holloway, a Durham neighborhood that experienced gun violence as recently as April of this year, just a block away from my own home. I last came before you all marched to express my concerns about the proposed pilot of ShotSpotter gunshot surveillance technology with its mixed and even controversial reviews. Since then, I've met with different neighbors in Cleveland Holloway and learned more about their experiences with community and safety and well-being, including gun-related violence. And I've learned a lot. Here's some of what I've learned. I learned that Cleveland Holloway residents, some of whom have lived in the neighborhood for over 20 years, are all too familiar with gun-related violence and have become skilled at identifying and describing gun violence in our neighborhood, including location, frequency, and number of shooters. I learned that several years ago, Cleveland Holloway residents formed a neighborhood support group to identify and address issues, challenges, and opportunities, and even met with Durham Police Department officers and committed themselves to calling emergency services like 911 to inform the Department of Gun Related Incidents and increase their awareness of issues in our neighborhood. I learned that my neighborhoods are already doing the work of ShotSpotter technology by regularly making calls to emergency services like 911 to report gunshots, both known and suspected, and channel emergency services to those who need it most in times of crisis. If real humans are already doing this work, why are nearly $200,000 of our public funding being allocated to a ShotSpotter pilot? Why the redundancy? What more can we expect ShotSpotter to do? For those on the city council and others in city of Durham government who argue that ShotSpotter is necessary because people are not calling in gunshots, let us understand why and address that particular issue. I count myself among those who try to avoid calling the police for many reasons. ShotSpotter does nothing to address a breakdown in communication between community residents and local government authorities. In fact, it threatens the critical relationship building between community residents and local government authorities by replacing humans with technology. And the reality is that people are calling in incidents. So, what is happening when they do? They're met with long response times and sometimes even lack of response because emergency services are understaffed and overtaxed. Let's please find other ways to invest in Durham and not in ShotSpotter.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Two, two minutes. Friends in the chamber, I want to thank you for your patience, uh, being with us tonight. We want to make sure we hear all of you. But we are approaching the nine o'clock hour, and we need to take a requisite break for our closed captioners to, to stretch and kind of get, get their second wind. So, um, Your Honor, with your permission, I'm going to, uh, call a recess. We're right, it's 8:59. We'll say 9:09. We will reconvene. We'll take a 10-minute break. 9:09, we'll be back.
Nothing's been decided. Megan, from the moment Deepak opened, it's been a hit. Everybody knows that. With great Broadway shows and musical performances, you don't have any trouble at all selling tickets. So, why are you providing this kind of program to all Durham residents? Why are you making Deepak so accessible?
Well, I think, I mean, you're right. Deepak has, has had a lot of success, but that success is because of our community. It's because we have such a dedicated, really enthusiastic audience and community. So, I work really hard to, to create opportunities so that we really have something for everybody and that all in our community can get into the theater and see some live entertainment. So, I think that we're getting better and better at that each year. We're adding programs and really trying to, to make our doors open to all and are building
The police department's first quarter crime report is offering mixed news. Chief Patrice Andrews presented the report to the city council during its May 19th work session. The report shows that Part I violent crime, which includes homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, increased by eight percent during the first quarter compared to the first three months of 2021. There were 11 homicides versus seven and 171 robberies versus 118 compared to the same time period last year. At the same time, Part I property crime was down by eight percent compared to the first three months of 2021. Part I property crime includes burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft. In addition, the report shows that sworn staffing levels were at 82% at the end of the first quarter, a time period that also saw the launch of the 30-by-30 recruiting initiative. The goal of that program is to improve the number of women among the department's sworn ranks. The police department is continuing to work with internal and external stakeholders on a variety of initiatives to address such issues as recruiting and violent crime. More information about how it's doing that can be found at durhampolice.com and through social media.
We, the people.
Nosotros de gente.
Women renmin.
Mia dumavio.
Hum sablog. We, the people, hold these truths.
To be self-evident that all men.
And women.
Are created equal.
And shall be afforded.
The inalienable right.
To fair housing.
The city of Durham and HUD are committed to ensuring that everyone is treated equitably when searching for a place to call home.
Did you know the city of Durham has interpretation and translation services available? The city adopted a language access plan to provide language services and help non-English speakers have access to city services and programs without a language barrier. Through the city's language access plan, residents have the right to request interpretation and translation services free of charge, receive translation of vital documents and emergency communications in Spanish, and submit complaints of language discrimination or on the failure to adequately provide services in accordance with the city's language access plan policy. For more information on the city's language access efforts, visit durhamnc.gov/languageaccess.
Sabía que la ciudad de Durham cuenta con servicios de interpretación y traducción. La ciudad adoptó un plan de acceso al idioma para ofrecer servicios lingüísticos y ayudar a que las personas que no hablan inglés puedan tener acceso a los servicios y programas de la ciudad sin la barrera del idioma. Por medio del plan de acceso al idioma, los habitantes tienen derecho a solicitar sin costo alguno servicios de interpretación y traducción, recibir la traducción de documentos importantes y de comunicaciones de emergencia en español, presentar una denuncia de discriminación por motivos de idioma o por no recibir servicios de manera adecuada de acuerdo con la política del plan de acceso al idioma de la ciudad. Para recibir más información sobre la labor de la ciudad relacionada con el acceso al idioma, visita durhamnc.gov-accesso.
See a pothole? There's an app for that. Missed pickup? There's an app for that. Need to set up water service? There's an app for that, too. Introducing the One Call App. Report your service request online on your schedule. Just download for free from the App Store or Google Play Store. Then, sign up and start using it to report problems, check the status of your service request, or just find out more information. Try the Durham One Call App today.
Have you experienced changes in Durham that negatively affect your everyday life? Many in the community have. The city and county of Durham want to correct those issues and ensure the future changes work for the entire community. They're listening and want to hear your ideas for making Durham a place where everyone thrives. That's why the city and county of Durham are inviting all members of the Durham community to take part in the creation of the new comprehensive plan, which will determine the vision for growing Durham over the next 30 years. This collaboration between the city and county of Durham and the Durham community is the result of the new Engage Durham Initiative, which seeks to ensure that all community stakeholders are involved in the shaping of city and county projects. Help build a Durham that works for everyone.
I was looking for an opportunity, and, uh, an old friend of mine suggested that I apply at Go Durham. The community really relies on us, on Go Durham Public Transportation.
Well, I like driving a bus because of the friendly culture. I love it in the morning when people greet me, "Good morning." They give me a friendly wave. They appreciate you. And that goes a long way, being a bus driver in Go Durham.
Anything can be achieved here. You can come in at the bottom and you will be able to excel in fairly a short amount of time. Yeah, I started as an operator, and I'm here now as an operator training specialist. So, as long as you stick to it, you can excel.
The perfect candidate that would excel at Go Durham is someone with tenacity, someone would drive, someone who wants to make a difference for their community.
You have to be people-oriented. You have to be experienced, and you have to be on hands, ready to go, but with the proper training, it's just like driving a car.
So, as a new driver with road training, come in and you see me, and I'm going to make sure you have all the tools to succeed.
They give you a lot of input, and they work with you step by step. So, you won't be alone in this.
To anyone considering working for Go Durham, you won't regret it. Please come, please apply. We would love to have you join the Go Durham team.
Hey, do you need help? Um, what time is it?
Friends, we're ready to reconvene. Madam Mayor, you want to, uh, you want to use the, yeah, you want to use the mat?
Yeah, you said, you said run it here.
No, go ahead, though.
All right, everybody, we're coming back, daughter.
Friends, if you'll come to order in the chamber, we're ready to begin. We want to be respectful of your time and thank you on behalf of our closed captions and all our staff for your patience this evening. I'm going to call the next five names who will have two minutes, peace to speak. And we're pleased to welcome Manju Rajendran, Janad Lane, Hugh McSherry, Raquel Baptist, and Virginia Vertman, and Dina Avila, in that order. Manju? Okay. Janad Lane, are you here? You're welcome, sir. You have two minutes. Good evening, welcome.
In Durham and all this shooting in Durham, and people actually sitting here concerned telling you, we don't need it. I'm from Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, where you are talking, where you was originally talking about where it comes from. It doesn't work if you don't have a prosecutor who won't prosecute. Santana Doomberry has been an absolute disaster for Durham. People talking about Chicago and they're talking about how it doesn't work in Chicago? Yeah, because they're not prosecuting people. If you're not going to prosecute people, it's not going to do any good. And please don't talk about equity and laws that are targeting black folk. No, these laws are targeting killers. These laws are targeting people who are destroying our community. In 19, in the 1990s, people complained about the 1994 Crime Bill. Well, it was black folk that went to the Democrat party. I'm a Republican, I got to admit, it was black folk that went to the Democrat party and asked, "Do something about our communities because they shooting and killing in here." And they came up with the 1994 Crime Bill, and it saved lives. You cannot sit here and save lives by just wishing it away, saying white supremacy is the problem, segregation is the problem. That's not the problem. We have a problem in the black community and you need to address it. Black mayor, black police chief, black sheriff, black district attorney, and who are the ones laying on the street bleeding down and getting shot? Black folk. So when you sit here asking a question, how many black people you got work at your business? Really? You had a school bus had to run off the road and you said it's because of poverty. It's not poverty. It's a problem in the black community that you have to address. The problem is, are you man enough or woman enough to address the community?
Good evening, City Council, Mayor O'Neill, City Manager Page, thank you. My name is Hugh McSherry. My address is 720 Vickers Avenue. I'm here representing Immaculate Conception Church and for the biggest Latino organizations in the North Carolina Congress of Latino Organizations, represented here supporting the budget proposal of the language incentive program, which compensates employees for providing language assistance through translation and/or interpretation in the city of Durham. We are very happy to see that Mayor Pro Tem Mark Middleton has proposed to include these funds in fulfillment of the public promise made by all the city council members to our organizations October 2021, with more than 400 people, 200 people in person, and 200 people online, and is now part of the proposed budget to be considered for the new fiscal year 2022, 2023. We support the compensation of the people who are providing services in several other languages. This is not only right, but it's also a good investment that prevents qualified personnel from taking jobs in other government departments and counties surrounding Durham. This is why we applaud this proposal and we thank the entire city council, city manager, for your leadership and for your inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Raquel Baptist. Virginia Vertman. Manju, I see you, sis. I called, you weren't in the chamber when I called you, so I just came back here, but you're up. Good evening, you have two minutes. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. I'm here as a Durham resident of 27705 710 Chalice Street to oppose the city contract with ShotSpotter and instead urge you to invest in alternative improvements like raises for city workers, mental health care, housing, as well as the Safety and Wellness Task Force that you expressly created to address this problem. ShotSpotter technology makes a large number of claims about its efficacy, but the truth is that ShotSpotter has not undergone independent analysis or outside verification for any of their detection programs or technologies. In fact, a 2021 study in St. Louis from Mayors and Blackburn stated that ShotSpotter did not reduce the rate of violent crime, but it did increase police deployment to unnecessary sites. This means increased police interaction with vulnerable communities and wasted taxpayer dollars. ShotSpotter is designed to be a reporting tool, not to combat the causative agents of violence. Things like street outreach workers and wraparound household support programs have both been shown to interrupt and reduce gun violence because they are focused on meeting unmet needs in the community instead of increasing unnecessary police interactions. Invest in our city workers and our Community Safety and Wellness Task Force, not in questionable invasive tech. As we welcome more big tech corporations to our city, I sincerely hope Durham can think critically about who and why we are contracting with this group. We should own the data they take from us. We would not own the data that they take from us. They record all of these things and we do not have access to them. The city does not have access to them. They should serve our community, not their own financial interests. I believe ShotSpotter is an unproven and dubious technology, and the data that exists supports that. I do not want my taxes to fund this contract. I do not want false promises and shady big tech in response to our crisis of gun violence. Please invest in proven solutions.
Thank you so much for being with us. Ms. Vertman. Dina Avila, and then Manju.
Good evening, my name is Dina Avila and I'm representing the Nehemiah Church in 514 North Mingham Street in Durham, with also the North Carolina Congress of Latin Organizations, supporting the Language Incentive Program. Madam Mayor and city council members, knowing that you want to compensate bilingual workers in the city's department has brought an immense sentiment of gratitude. Our organizations would like to thank the city council for reaching a higher point in this proposal. We would like for you to know that the North Carolina Congress for Latin Organizations held listening sessions last year with over 300 Latinos, representing 4,200 families within our five organizations around Durham, where we understood that the language barrier is one of our main issues in the city. We started talking about the language barrier with police officers and the need for more bilingual officers in the force and a higher language incentive bonus for them. But knowing that all departments will benefit from this will be a tremendous victory, not only in Durham, but in the entire Latino community in the country. This will be the beginning of change. It is the next step to make the city even more inclusive. So tonight, we would like to thank you all for working with us as organizations, for listening to our needs and priorities, and we only hope this program keeps improving. Our community will be very happy to learn if this proposal passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being with us. Manju? Good evening, thank you for being with us. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, city council members. It is wrong and misleading to tell Durham neighborhoods reeling with grief due to gun violence that Gun, that ShotSpotter gunshot detection surveillance technology will offer balm for the sorrow. We deserve to see our public dollars spent to keep all our babies housed, happy, and safe. Over years, Durham community members have shared with city council what actual solutions to gun violence would look like, but we don't yet see those needs fulfilled in this year's city budget. All unhoused Durham families need long-term quality housing. All residents deserve, receiving rent assistance needed extended. All city workers need the full 8% step pay plan raise with inflation they've been asking for, and we all need community spaces like Wheels Roller Rink. Earlier this year, city council resurrected a proposal to buy ShotSpotter Corporation's surveillance technology. Some city council members have urged Durham residents to ignore ShotSpotter's well-documented track record of failure and harm in many other cities and just give the ShotSpotter pilot a chance. Though ShotSpotter proponents will say to you that they hope an alert could help a gunshot victim because it might dispatch police and ambulance a few milliseconds sooner, what they won't tell you is that evidence shows that the number of seconds saved would sadly not be adequate to save a life. We need to end gun violence before it begins. Only politicians stand to gain when they push a failed product that allows them to say that they did something about gun violence. Durham residents lose when our hard-earned social wage gets squandered on a deal with ShotSpotter Corporation. That technology costs $65,000 to $90,000 per square mile per year, with an additional $10,000 per square mile one-time initiation fee, according to their own website. That doesn't even begin to cover the costs of significantly increased police dispatch to dead-end calls for service, or the settlements that the public will have to pay out to people who are victimized by ShotSpotter's falsification of records to match police statements.
Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Madam Mayor and friends in the chamber, that is the end of all of the cards that I have. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone here who wishes to be heard, who has not spoken as of yet, who has not spoken? This is a public hearing, who wishes to be heard? All right. Would you approach, please, and would you state your name and address? And when you finish your comment, if you don't mind, would you go over to the clerk and fill out a card for us, for our records? Thank you, welcome. You have two minutes.
Yes, absolutely, well, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Allison Swaim and I live at 601 Bon Air. I'm here to speak and ask you to please save Wheels Roller Rink. I'm a public high school teacher. I teach at Riverside High School, and the majority of my students are Black and Latina. And one of our assignments this semester was to design your own Google map that had your favorite places in Durham. There were lots of different places on the maps, but the one thing in common was Wheels. Most all of my students included Wheels on their maps. And when I told them that Wheels had closed in the pandemic, they were really sad to hear that, but I told them that Durham, the city of Durham and Parks and Rec had bought Wheels, so was hoping that it could be reopened as a rink. So I, I don't know a lot about the plans for the Aquatic Center, but I just saw the flyers put together by Ms. Gwen Silver and her group, who spoke earlier. And I told my students about this at the last minute, but they couldn't be here. But I did just want to be another voice asking you to please look into saving the rink. It's already there. It doesn't have to be built. You just have to open the doors. I don't know if any of y'all have been to Wheels, but it's just such a joyful place. The crowd is intergenerational. It's a majority Black and Latina space. I mean, so many kids having such a good time. I would love to see this become, stay a public resource and a public space that our community could have joy together in. So please look into what it would take to save this facility that already exists. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who has not spoken and wishes to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the virtual queue with a hand up that's indicated that they wish to be heard?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I don't see any hands raised, but there are some people who have not spoken.
Right, if they've made no indication, then, all right, well, with that.
There is one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul, Paul Wincoop, if you would make him hearable?
My Zoom software is not functioning.
All right. If, if you would, Mr. Wincoop, if he can, he can submit his comments to the council, we will gladly receive them. Wait, it looks like.
He's been activated.
Okay. Mr. Wincoop, can you hear me, sir? Mr. Wincoop, can you hear me? Mr. Wincoop, can you hear me? All right, I'm, well, it looks like his mic is hot. Mr. Wincoop, would you try hitting star six? All right, in the interest of time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask if you would contact Mr. Wincoop and ask if he would submit his, his comments. Will that be made part of the record for us? With that, I'm going to, Madam Mayor, with your permission, declare this public hearing closed. The matter is now back before the council. I'll also yield the gavel. Back to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem. And we will now move to item number 35 on our general business agenda, which is also a public zoning hearing, 509 Sharon Road. And we will receive our staff report. I believe that will be Mr. Michael Stock.
I apologize, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. Before I begin, my name is Michael Stock with the Planning Department, and staff notes that required notifications for the planning department public hearing items have been performed and are on file for review. This request for utility extension agreement voluntary annexation and initial zoning map change has been received from Jared Edens for one parcel of land totaling approximately 68 acres, 5.794 acres, located at 509 Sharon Road. The current zoning of the site is residential rural and rural suburban 20. The, it also is within the Falls, Jordan Watershed Overlay District B or FJB. For the initial zoning of this site, if the annexation is approved, the applicant proposes to change the designation to Plan Development Residential 6.904 to allow for the construction of 40 townhome units. The Watershed Overlay would remain unchanged. This, this request, Z210002, received a recommendation or approval from the Planning Commission on March 8th, 2022, with a vote of 7 to 6. There are commitments on the development plan, and those include treating the 100-year storm event, dedication of right-of-way along Sharon Road, widening of Sharon Road to accommodate a bicycle lane, construction of a left turn lane. Sorry, scrolling. Building design and material commitments, and to be entered into the record by the applicant construction donation of one townhome unit for Habitat for Humanity. The properties are currently designated low-density residential in the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning isn't, is not consistent with that designation. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends a change to future land use map of low, medium-density residential. As a reminder, three actions are requested tonight. First action on the ordinance of annexing the property and authorizing the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement. And if this annexation is approved, then there will be two more actions. The second action would be on the action on the ordinance changing the zoning map change from RR and RS 22 PDR 6.904, and third, adoption of the appropriate statement of consistency. Thank you, and the applicant is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. We've now heard the report from staff and I will declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? Seeing none, we have Mr. Jared Edens here. He is representing Edens Investments. Mr. Edens, welcome. Mr. Edens, welcome, and you may be heard if you'd like at this time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. Jared Edens with Edens Investments. Appreciate your time tonight. I know you've had a long evening. I'll try to be brief. I appreciate Mike's summary of our project. As Mike stated, we're looking to rezone about 5.8 acres on Sharon Road. It's a pretty clean site. There's no streams, floodplains, or wetlands on the side. It's all high and dry wooded property. The existing zoning is RS 20 and RR. I don't think that's sufficient for that location and for the highest and best use on the tract, so I think that townhomes are probably a better alternate, so we're requesting a density of about 6.9. As you may recall, some of you were on council last year. There's a similar precedent set at 920 Sharon Road. That's a couple thousand feet down the road south of here. Council approved townhomes at about 7.2 an acre last year, similar-sized project. That was a 55-unit townhome project. Here, we're proposing 40 townhomes. We had two neighborhood meetings along the way, one in November of 2020, met again in July of '21, had some good communications with our neighbors. I did meet with our immediate neighbor at 519 Sharon Road to work out some additional buffers and some privacy fencing to help them. They wanted some additional screening for their site, so we worked that out. As Mike mentioned, we are doing the 100-year storm detention, which has become standard for us, the road widening you talked about. The one thing I do want to, and Mike touched on it briefly, you know, we're, I've been trying to figure out ways to incorporate affordable housing when we can in our projects, and, you know, sometimes we can do it on the rental projects. We've had a little bit more difficulty in the past on incorporating some affordable on the for-sale products, but what we've worked out here with our builder is, I've been having meetings with Habitat for Humanity, Durham Habitat for Humanity over the past few weeks, and trying to work, trying to work out ways to involve them in our zonings to help out on their affordable issues. So we're proffering this evening that out of the 40 units, we're going to be constructing one unit for Durham Habitat for Humanity. That unit will be constructed and donated to Durham Habitat. That's prior to the 30th CO for the project, so it's been, within the first three-quarters of the project, we will complete one unit out of the 40 and dedicate it to Habitat for Humanity for Durham Habitat. So I was very happy that our builder was willing to do that, and I'm glad to offer that up this evening. You know, typically, on a 40-unit project, you know, your affordable housing payment may be in the ballpark of $10,000 to $20,000, just based on historically, you know, where in this instance, we're going to actually give a completed unit, land, construction. That's a market-rate unit to Habitat as part of the zoning. So I appreciate your time tonight, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edens, and Mr. Edens was a proponent of this item. I would also open the floor up for any who have signed up in opposition. Make sure that we haven't missed anybody, anybody virtually, and we did not have any cards. All right. I will now declare the public hearing to be closed.
Madam Mayor. Pamela Andrews has her hand raised in the queue.
Would you say that name again?
Pamela Andrews.
Ms. Andrews, you will have the floor, and I believe we had not started the clock for Mr. Edens, so I believe we will probably have approximately about three minutes rather than two. You have the floor. Ms. Andrews, if you could see if you could hit star six to make sure that you're unmuted He did talk for five minutes. Ms. Andrews, you will have five minutes, I believe. We cannot hear you. We can see you closed captioning and is able to capture what you're saying, but we cannot It may be something in the back, but if closed captioning, if you're able to capture her, if you would do so, we would be able to read what you're, what she's saying.
Good evening, City Council. I have reached out to you many times, and I'm reaching out once again. I'm asking you, have you all? And to look at the dangerous situations that we have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. I believe that closed captioning captured most of your comments, but we were able to hear your last three or four sentences, so thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for what you do.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem has a couple of questions for Mr. Edens.
Mr. Edens, good evening, sir. Thank you for being here. I noticed in the packet, the notice of the community, the public meetings, I didn't see any readout of it, though, or any kind of description of what the sentiment was. Could you give us a sense of what you heard from the residents at the meetings?
Yeah, and so we used to, you know, before we went virtual, we used to do a summary memo and write those, and then when we went virtual, and then people started just getting the links to the meetings, and they would watch the meetings for themselves, and we sort of got away from doing the summaries, and I think that's what is missing here. It's just sort of happened over time. But I know we had seven attendees at the second meeting. I mean, generally, you know, people seem okay. I mean, you know, the neighbors across the street are getting a turn lane into their development on Sharon Road as part of it, so there's some public benefit to the people across Sharon. I know some of those property owners are interested in water and sewer connections, and we're going to be bringing a water sewer across our frontage for some of our neighbors. So not a lot of pushback so far, but I mean, I can't speak for them, but, you know, we did meet with our immediate neighbor to the south, work out the additional buffer and the fencing. We met with Oak Grove Church. We've been working with them for years on our sewer easements, so we've, we've had some good, good work with our neighbors so far.
Okay. You mentioned the other developments in the area. What's your, based upon comps in the area, what's your anticipated price point?
Yeah, so I asked the builder that today because I always qualify that answer with if homes were for sale tomorrow, right, because it changes so quickly. You know, he's telling me mid-3s, townhomes mid-300s would be the starting price if they were to be sold tomorrow. Again, that changes, you know, three months ago at Planning Commission, it may have been a different number, to be honest with you, but it's, it's somewhere in the mid-3s is what he's anticipating.
Yeah, and that's fair. I've always been impressed because I can count on one hand the times when, yeah, sometimes I'll go by and look at developments that I voted on and look at the signs for what the units are going at, and I've been impressed how, just how close the number of times when folks stood before us and said, "They're going to be 400, 500, 300," that they're actually listed at that on the sign when they're, you know, they're selling them and going by, and I make a habit of kind of going by after I vote, although it clearly is not the perfect science, but there are some data points that can at least, you know, inform. Since you mentioned the other developments, I thought I'd ask. The proffer for Habitat for Humanity, is this the first time you're debuting that? Is this the first time staff is hearing that?
Yeah, so we started talking with Mike and Sarah within the last week or two about it. You know, I met with Habitat maybe three weeks ago. We have an existing zoning case in another part of town where we're working with Habitat to actually dedicate completed townhome pads to Habitat for Humanity as part of the zoning, so we would develop it for Habitat and dedicate, and in that instance, they would be building the units themselves in that development. For this one, it's actually the same builder on this project. We were trying to get creative and figure out another way to incorporate it, so rather than dedicate two or three finished pads and have Habitat come in and build the units, we just took one completed unit and said we would give it to Habitat for Humanity. So they have a list of, they have different income levels that they work with, right? So, you know, they may choose to take the unit and rent it, that would be up to them. They may choose to take the unit and sell it at a discounted rate to one of their pre-qualified buyers, that it would be dedicated to them free of charge for them to do with what they please. Now, that's the first time we've been able to do that so far, yeah.
Yeah, I don't recall anything like that since I've been on cap. In your, in your dollars, though, what would a proffer like that be worth?
It's a, it's a several hundred thousand. I mean, when you look at the cost of the homes, builders typically make, you know, 15%, 20%, 25% on the home, so if you take that off of what the expected sales price would be, that's what your cost is, and it's a really significant number, for sure, yeah.
Okay.
But it's a precedent, I mean, we're trying to set. We have other projects coming up that we're trying to do similar things, and it's just something we're trying to do, yeah.
Thank you for that. I think that's all I have, Madam Mayor. I'll yield back. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Edens.
Right. Are there any other questions from members of council?
Did you want to close the public hearing?
Any questions of the developer before I close it?
That's how we do it.
All right. I now declare this public hearing to be closed, and the matter is now back before council. There are three motions for our consideration with item 35, 509 Sharon Road Consolidated Annexation. As you know, we will have to raise our hands as a show of support or not. We will consider each motion at one at a time. The first motion, motion number one, is to adopt an ordinance annexing 509 Sharon Road into the city of Durham effective June 30 of 2022 and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Edens Land Corp.
Moved as read. Second?
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and seconded by Councilman Williams. All those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. All those opposed would have the same right. That motion passes 6-1 with Councilwoman Freeman voting no. We now move to motion number two, which is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the residential rural RR and residential suburban 20, RS 20 Falls-Jordan Watershed Overlay District-B, F slash J dash B county jurisdiction and establishing the same as Planned Development Residential 6.904, PDR, yes, I'm sorry, PDR 6.904 Falls slash Jordan Watershed Overlay District-B, F slash J dash B city jurisdiction.
Moved as read. Second?
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and seconded by Councilman Williams. All those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. All those opposed have the same right. That motion passes 6 to 1 with Councilwoman Freeman voting no. We now move to our third and final motion for this item, and that is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D dash 605.
Move to adopt consistency. Second?
It has been moved by Council, by Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and seconded by Councilman Williams. All those in favor, if you would sign by raising your left hand. All those opposed have the same right. That motion passes 6-1 with Councilwoman Freeman voting no. We now turn to item number 35, 36, I'm sorry, Highgate Commercial Zoning Map Change, and we will now recognize Mr. Stock.
Thank you again, Michael Stock with the Planning Department. General Stoll and James Stein of RRPIV Homestead Durham LLC propose to change the zoning designation of one parcel of land totaling just under an acre located at 5588 Highgate Drive. The current zoning is office and institutional with the development plan or OID. The applicant proposed to change this designation to commercial general with a text-only development plan or CGD. The following uses would be prohibited: residential uses, firing range, nightclub or bar, self-service storage, manufactured home sales, and vehicle sales, leasing, and rentals. The property is currently designated office and commercial on the future land use map. The proposed zoning is inconsistent with the office designation. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends a change to FLUM to designate the entire property as commercial. Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of 11 to 2 on March 8, 2022. And as a reminder, there are two actions being requested. First is the consideration of the zoning map change from OID to CGD, and second is the adoption of the appropriate statement of consistency. Thank you, and the applicant is available, or the applicant's representative is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. You've heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for Mr. Stock from members of council? Seeing none, we will now move to Mr. Patrick Biker, who I believe will be speaking as a proponent. Want to make sure that there are no other people in the audience to speak as proponents, and we want to check and see if there is anybody virtually or in the audience to speak in opposition so that we can make sure that we have the same time. If you're here to speak in opposition of this matter, if you would do that virtually, Attorney Biker, you have three minutes.
What do you feel about two minutes?
All righty.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of the council. I'm Patrick Biker with Morningstar Law Group. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm here this evening representing RRPIV Homestead Durham, the owner of Homestead Shopping Center, which includes this small, just under one-acre parcel along the south side of North Carolina Highway 54. It really is not a complicated story with this agenda item. Our client team has tried to develop this out parcel with an office use over the past five years. Since this is a well-established shopping center along Highway 54, it just makes sense to change the zoning district from office institutional to commercial general. Even though RRPIV is the owner of Homestead Shopping Center, we wanted to be sure that no inappropriate uses would be developed here, and so that is a perfect use for a text-only development plan. I think the Planning Commission appreciated that point and therefore recommended approval of this zoning map change by a vote of 11 to 2. Accordingly, we respectfully ask for your approval of this item. I appreciate your time tonight, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Biker. I turn to my colleagues to see if you have any questions for, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Biker. Good to see you. Thank you for being with us. I know sometimes the text-only development can be sometimes fraught to navigate through, but I did want to ask a question. You indicated a, in the packet, or it's indicated in the packet that there was a neighborhood meeting. Is the list of exclusions the statutorily exhaustive list, or is that list informed by what you heard from folk in the community?
Mostly what we heard from folks in the community, sir. I think it was just, we, it was very sparsely attended, and we did follow up with a couple. The building that's right across Highgate, that's an office building, and the, I apologize, I don't remember his name, an Asian-American gentleman lives right across the street, I recall, talking directly with them, and that informed the application that came forward this evening.
Did anyone raise in the community meeting any concerns about either electronic gaming places or payday lending?
No, but we, if you want us to strike those on the fly, we're happy to do that. But, although having said that, again, our- But having said that, again, RRPIV owns the whole shopping center that's anchored by Sprouts. They're not going to put in there any gaming thing there. I mean, it's their shopping center, so they're very cognizant of the need to have a quality tenant here.
All right. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. I'll yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Are there any other questions from any other colleagues of council?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just have to share with the council. I just heard from Pastor Glenn Davis that a pillar of our community, Willie Patterson, the former president of the Crest Street Community Council, has just passed away and gone to heaven. So for those of you who've been around for a long time, you know how important he was to the Durham we know and love today, especially as it relates to the East-West Expressway. So I just heard that, Mayor, and I know you'd want to hear that. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. We offer a moment of silence for Mr. Patterson and the work that he's done in Durham and Thank you all for that. I now declare this public hearing to be closed, and matter thirty-five is back before the council. I'm sorry, thirty-six. I don't know why I keep saying thirty-five, thirty-six. There are two motions for our consideration with item thirty-six, Highgate Commercial Zoning Map Change, for our consideration this evening. The first motion, number one, is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the office and institutional with a development plan O slash D Falls, Jordan Watershed Overlay District dash B F slash J dash B Major Transportation Corridor MTC districts and establishing the same as commercial general with a text-only development plan CGD Falls, Jordan Watershed Overlay District dash B F slash J dash B Major Transportation Corridor MTC.
Moved as read. Second?
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, would you raise your left hand? All those opposed would have the same right. I believe all left hands were raised. That passes unanimously. We now go to motion number two, which is to adopt a consistency and reasonableness statement as required by North Carolina General Statute one six zero D dash six zero five.
Move to adopt consistency. Second?
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, would you sign by raising your right, your left hand? I believe that all hands are raised. No need to ask in opposition. It passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We now move to item thirty-seven, which is a public hearing and proposed economic development incentive agreement with Green Solutions LLC, and we will hear from Mr. Chris Dickey.
Yes, Mayor O'Neill and members of council, my name is Chris Dickey with the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, for using the item to consider approval of a proposed agreement between the city of Durham and Green Solutions LLC. Green Solutions LLC is an African-American systems integrator and IT solution service company. It is owned by a husband and wife team that has been in business since two thousand and eight. Green Solution LLC requests an economic development incentive in the amount of two hundred and six thousand thou, two hundred and six thousand dollars for a neighborhood revitalization project at both five oh eight Simmons Street and twelve eleven Fayetteville Street of Durham, North Carolina, as a two-phase project. The properties are in the city's target area of Fayetteville Street Historic District and have been under, and have been underdeveloped during, have been underdeveloped drawing unwanted and negative traction due to its severe blight along Fayetteville Street. This area has suffered tremendously with drug trafficking, drug abuse, prostitution, vandalism, violence, and many other types of crimes. The proposed economic development process of renovating two underutilized buildings totaling approximately six thousand three hundred and sixty square feet, the proposed project will produce nine hundred ninety-one thousand private investment with two hundred and six thousand dollars in city funding, producing a four to one ratio. A major priority of the city of Durham is increasing and strengthening the economic stability of the city. The project, when completed, will be a key step in implementing the neighborhood assessment plan that was approved by city council. This calls for renovation of blighted and underutilized commercial buildings as a means of attracting private capital investment to promote business development in this city of Durham, targeted commercial order. The project will serve as a catalyst project to continue to attract business development opportunities to this area. Staff endorses this project, which would be an asset in promoting the continued revitalization
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dickey. First, I'd like to make note for the agenda, the wording under the first, there are two things for our consideration. I believe we have just conducted a public hearing for this matter, and so at this time, I'm opening it up for a public hearing. That's what we're doing at this point, to see if there are any questions for Mr. Dickey Seeing none, are there any folks in the audience or virtually that would like to speak on this item? All right. That will be Ms. Victoria Peterson. Would you be speaking in opposition or as a proponent, a proponent? And Ms. Adams, would you be speaking as a proponent or an opponent? All right, okay. And I believe before we get to, we would, before we get to our questions and our comments, I believe the applicants are here and would like to give them the opportunity to speak And if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and Mayor Pro Tim Middleton. My name is Marcus Green.
And I'm Tracy Green.
And we are here on behalf of Green Solutions. We are a IT integrator that strategically and intentionally chose the Fayetteville Corridor to expand and grow our business. So that is the area in which we chose to utilize as our global headquarters for our company. And I'm willing to answer any question that anyone has about it.
Are there any questions from members of council? Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Adams, and then we'll be followed by Ms. Peterson. You will each have three minutes apiece.
Thank you. I want to support this economic incentive for a black-owned company that is going to bring revitalization to areas of the Fayetteville Street Corridor, creating job opportunities in a growing industry, IT. This will match all the other kinds of business incentives that have been given to majority companies. This is a real opportunity to integrate this IT company headquarters with Durham Tech, with the, with North Carolina Central University. It is a great opportunity, and I am grateful to the city for the incentive program going to a black-owned business to protect, to invest in a historic legacy neighborhood. Thank you, and I support this one hundred and twenty percent.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, for your comments. Ms. Peterson, you will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Dickey, how are you doing, sir?
Doing fine, Ms. Peterson.
I haven't seen you for a little while. And if you, are you behind this project? Do you support it?
Yes, I support it.
Okay. This, I have a lot of respect for this young man, for Mr. Dickey. He's, he's been out here trying to help our communities, but one of the questions I did not hear about, how many persons will they be employing for their, for this project? And is this city dollars that they are going to be using, or is this all just their dollars? And one of the reasons why, because usually there's information in the booklet to have good information about some of the different projects. And I'm glad to hear and see that this is an African-American company. But, Mr. Dickey, do you know about how many persons they are going to be employed? And I also wish I could get a picture to see exactly where they're going to be located on the Fayetteville Street Corridor.
Okay.
Mr. Dickey, before you respond, I'm going to ask Ms. Peterson to use up her three minutes so that we can just finish that time, and then you will be free to respond, ma'am, if you would.
Well, one of the reasons where I would also support this, because in this community, particularly that Fayetteville Street Corridor, as well as Austin Avenue, we need to have some good development also in both of those areas, and it really would be good if we could find some African-Americans around the country that would be willing to relocate and bring their businesses here to this area. One of the problems that I have seen and have observed in this community for quite a few years, we pump a lot of monies into a lot of businesses, but when it really comes down to, are they really hiring African-Americans? I have a real problem now that everybody wants to call everybody a minority. No. We need to really make sure that we're advocating for the African-American community, because they have been here the longest when it comes to economic development. That Fayetteville Street Corridor and what is happening downtown here, my understanding, I think there's only really one or two, one or two African-American businesses located downtown here. And we have pumped a lot of monies into this city to rebuild downtown, but for whatever reason, some things have fallen on deaf ears to make sure that the African-American community really has businesses to make sure that our people can get jobs and can get employment.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson, for your comments tonight. Mr. Dickey, if you would like to summarize, and I'll also give the Greens the opportunity to have some comments.
Yes, Mayor O'Neill. Where the project is located is the old Weaver Street Cleaners, Cleaners, right across the street, there's that very large, the old Weaver Street, right, Larry Stone, it's across the street, that large building that's been sitting dilapidated for close to seventeen years, and then there's a building behind there. So what, what the Greens are looking to, well, what Marcus Green and his wife is looking to do is renovate both of those buildings from a location standpoint. The city's putting two hundred and six thousand dollars into the project. Marcus is putting approximately eight hundred thousand dollars into the project. In reference to how many people will be housed on there, I'll let Marcus talk about the demographics of his company and whatever else he wants to expand about his company.
Yeah, so going back to the intentional nature of why we chose the Fayetteville Street Corridor, as everyone know, the rich history of Fayetteville Street, the Black Wall Street. So the headquarters, the C-suite, will be located at twelve eleven Fayetteville in the old Dr. Mills house. The Dr. Dawson, the building where Dr. Dawson did his medical, is where the actual technical capacity of the company will be held. So right now, Green Solutions and we have, we utilize probably twenty-five contracting staff across the globe, and what we're looking to do is bring those jobs and turn them into full-time, full-time employees. And so what we're going to be doing as we transition from contracted staff around, around the country, we're going to be training individuals. My, myself and my wife are HBCU grads. We graduated from Lane College. So in that intentional nature, Central University that is, you know, a rock throw from our, our location, is going to be vital, training up these, these, these young individuals to be in an area that we are very, very unrepresented. And so with that said, we know that sometime the college is not for, for everyone, and that traditional path may not be where a lot of people take. However, in my industry, if you are trained properly and get an industry standard certification, you can make a very, very good living wage. And that's my goal and my mission, is to help these individuals understand our, you know, my industry, and, and give them a easy path inroad to the industry. So that's what Green Solution is.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Amis. Thank you, Mr. Dickey. Are there any other questions from the council? All right, I will now declare that this public hearing is closed, and this matters now before the council. We have one, I believe, motion for our consideration, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now that matters back before the council, I didn't have any questions for the applicants. I did want to thank the staff for bringing this to us, Economic and Workforce Development. A few years ago, I was on a junket with National League of Cities to Silicon Valley in San Francisco and areas around it, meeting with some of the big-name companies we were recognizing, others, and it was, it was made painfully clear the lack of representation of black and brown folk in IT and all of the industries that were out there, and all these wonderful entrepreneurs with so much money being thrown at them. It was, it was wonderful to be in that environment, but I have to admit, I was feeling some kind of way, because I know Durham's history and what we want, want to represent it to the nation. I am really excited and pleased to be supporting this economic development incentive package tonight. I don't know how many millions of dollars I've voted on since I've been on the council in economic incentive. Good packages to a whole lot of other areas and interests in the city. But I think that when we think about the, the talking we've done in the city about our shared economic prosperity plan, we talk about restoring the greatness of the Hayti area, the Fayetteville Street Corridor is really the last great approach to downtown, and perhaps the most underdeveloped one, being such a gateway to our downtown area. It really is want for, I think, this type of investment. It's the closest thing probably the reparations we'll see in a little while, and I think it's a good policy. I also want to say that I'm excited about voting on this, not because it's just a black company, but this is a solid black company that's been around and has proven themselves as well. So I'm excited to participate in voting for what I hope will be a cascading event, that it will precipitate and inspire other things like this along that historic Fayetteville Street Corridor, which I believe is a place that people around this country should be making pilgrimage to come and see, like they do Sweet Auburn in Atlanta and Sugar Hill in Harlem. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Williams.
I too want to thank you for your intentionality. There is a lot that's happening in our city right now, in, in the Triangle as well. A good friend of mine, Bill Sproul, co-founder and CEO of Global Data Consortium, just sold his company. It's a black-owned company. Just sold his company and made all forty of his employees millionaires, and he's a multimillionaire now. And he is now on a venture around the world to get more people of color, specifically black people, engage in the tech industry. And if we look at And if we look at the writings on the wall that everyone else seems to see, Google, Apple, Meta, possibly, Amazon, Fidelity, Grail, Grain, and all the others, we have to get in the game. And there's going to be a lot of talk about, oh, my gosh, these companies are coming here. Well, there is no stopping them. There is no stopping them. So we either going to leverage or we're going to get drug. And we can't even keep up. We can't build housing fast enough. And we don't, we can't seem to train people fast enough for these jobs as well. So I appreciate your intentionality. It's the beginning of, it's the beginning of what's needed. And I'm looking forward to whatever way I can personally and formally and professionally support the efforts that you guys have going on to, to maybe expedite the training process to get more folks involved and skilled to grab these jobs, not only with you all. Hopefully, you'll scale and expand your company and your footprint in the area, but also, you know, just preparing folks for the jobs that are coming. It's easy and actually comfortable to say that within the next five years, we're probably going to have 30,000 to 35,000 jobs injected into this community at six figures. We think we have a housing problem now. So it, it's coming. And I just appreciate you all for what you're doing. Build it, build it well, make it beautiful and attractive, hire folks, pay them well, so they can be more, so they can be, just participate more in the actual tax-paying process. And, you know, enhance their quality of life. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Manon.
Yes, I'm also excited, as an HBCU educator, for you just saying linking maybe some interns, some jobs to North Carolina Central. But not only to North Carolina Central, I want you to also reach out to some of these high schools. What I see as an educator is that people of color don't really know, they don't tend to go into computer science or tech because they think it's too hard or they think they can't do it. So you're an example, so you're leading by example. So I thank you.
I too would like to offer my thanks to you as a double eagle. And having grown up along Fayetteville Street and walked that street on many a days, we are so glad to know that something great is about to happen beginning on Fayetteville Street. So we're, we're so happy that you chose Durham. We're so happy that you chose the Fayetteville Street corridor. And we definitely offer our congratulations and, and we'll wish you as to what happens next. So excited about that. So excited. I do think that there is one motion for our consideration with this matter. We have now closed our public hearing, I believe, and is now back for our consideration. And I would love to entertain a motion-
Madam Mayor.
-to authorize the city manager to execute an economic development incentive agreement with Green Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $206,000 for building renovation projects at 508 Simmons Street and 1211 Fayetteville Street, Durham, North Carolina.
Madam Mayor, somos.
I'm going to second.
All right, it has been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Hyman. And I am going to ask that all those in favor, we sign by raising their left hand. All those opposed will have the same right. Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. I also want to take a moment to recognize that today is the anniversary of D-Day, the storming of the shores at Normandy. We have a, a veteran, and we always like to make sure that we honor our veterans. And today is the 78th anniversary of D-Day. And once again, I would offer for us to have a moment of silence before we move into our pooled items in honor of all those veterans. Thank you for that. I know our closed captioning folk have been going a really long time tonight. And I do want to at least give them about one minute before we move into these, into our last four pooled items, just as a standing break for all of us for one second, to stretch it out for a second and give them a break. They work really, really hard. And we just really kind of need to recognize that sometimes. So we'll start back in, at 10:14. Just to give them a moment. And our minute is up. It goes fast. All right, everybody, we have four pooled items for our consideration. Item number 16, number 26, 31, and 33. So we will take them in that order. Item number 16 is the approval of amendment number one to contract 18597 for legal aid of North Carolina LA NC to administer the Emergency Rental Assistance II Program. That item was pulled by Ms. Stella Adams. And she is speaking in support of the item, I believe. Two minutes. Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Madam Mayor, counsel, on this particular item, I am, while legal aid should, should get the expansion, they've got to do a better job. We have got to move these people through the program. The wait time is still too long. We need them to, we need to figure out how to expedite. And hopefully, this additional contract money will help them expedite getting that money out and keeping people in their homes. I was heartbroken by the woman who talked about, she was on the waiting list, she was in the eligibility pool, but she got evicted because it couldn't be managed in a timely manner. She waited two months for assistance and ended up in a hotel. That two months is too long. So I hope that the expansion of this, this expanded money will allow them to do a better job of administering the money. Further, I need the, to, there to be, as was asked for earlier, additional monies from the ARP or whatever assistance fund. We need an additional $6 million to cover the people who have been delayed. It's gotten more expensive because we have not gotten the efficiency we need. So hopefully, this administrative contract will allow us, will allow them to be more effective and efficient in delivering services to folks. And we also need to think about a contract for North Carolina Central's clinic because they're handling the undocumented folks.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Just to check with our clerk, I do not believe anyone else has signed up to speak for or against this item. All right. We will now turn our attention to entertaining a motion for this item to authorize the city manager to amend contract number 18597 to administer the Durham Rent Relief Program to increase the total budget by $121,678 from $6,461,893 to $6,583,571 funded with the Federal Emergency Rental Aid Assistance II funds.
Somos.
All right, that has been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Capiero. All those in favor, would you raise your left hand? All those opposed have the same right. Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. We now turn to item number 26, our next pooled item, which is FY 2021, the 2022 Capital Improvement Project, CIP Budget Amendment Project Closeout. That item was pulled by Ms. Gwen Silver. I believe Ms. Silver is no longer here. Is she on the?
Ms. Silver's departed, but she did provide a written statement, and I'll distribute it to counsel.
Thank you so much. Mr. James Chavis Jr. also pulled that item. He is no longer here. Now take it, he's no lo, he's not on the queue. Ms. Cheryl Smith also pulled this item. She was here, I do not see her in the audience. All right. There are three items for our consideration for this item. The first would, I would entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance. Oh, is there a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment and just acknowledge and address some of what was brought up in our conversation around the CIP. And note that Ms. Silver, Mr. Chavis, and Mr. Smith, along with the folks with the roller derby, are all raising this issue around our Parks and Recs decision to not open the Wheels Fun Park skating rink. And I would like to have an answer, or at least a semblance of understanding of what is happening around Wheels Fun Park, specifically around timeframe and, I guess, what the plan is. Because apparently, there's some communication that's been happening in the community that it's going to be closed and stay closed and I, that I have not been made aware of. And so I'm just trying to get my hands around what's happening. And I would also add that I would like to add my concern around not having Wheels Fun Park open this summer with the mental health benefits that are provided when folks have an opportunity to skate. I think that there are a number of conversations that have been going on. And I, I don't want to get into the Merrick Moore Hoover Road Park part of this, but I do think that explanations need to be given. And these decisions can't just happen in a silo or a vacuum. There needs to be a conversation that happens with both communities, not just one or the other, separate and apart. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, approach it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, you know, I, I think it'd be extremely beneficial to have Wheels still as a skating facility. But I, I want to be very clear, particularly in light of staff work. We voted unanimously as a council to purchase Wheels under the aegis of an aquatic center. And that, that was well documented, what we were voting to buy it for. If, if we want to subsequently have conversations about preserving it as a skating rink, I think we should. But I, I just, for the record, want to be very clear, we knew what we were voting for when we purchased Wheels. It was to expand our aquatic center. So I just, I just, you know, I knew what I was voting for, at least. But that's not to say, that does not preclude us from having, I think, a robust conversation, particularly if the community is, is sounding off about it, about preserve, perhaps having both at that, at that, at that space. But, but to be clear, when it was presented to the council by the staff, it was presented clearly what we were acquiring that land for. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Capiero.
Thank you. I just want to some clarifying. We can have this conversation yesterday, but that is not my memory. I remember that there was a lot of conversation around potential. And obviously, the aquatic facility was mentioned. I think also potentially a skate park was mentioned because there were a lot of community needs that were, this was pre-Councilmember Williams and Mayor O'Neill's time on the council. My, I remember schematic designs that included all kinds of potential options and that we were going to be in a community engagement phase. So I'm assuming that that is what is actually happening right now. And I will appreciate just a, even an email from staff just letting us know where we are in the process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask our city manager to give us some clarification on what's going on with this particular item. I do know that we will have a hearing from, we will be having a presentation from Durham Parks and Recs on Thursday. But she can provide some clarification on this particular item. And then I'll turn it back over to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I did just want to point out that this particular item that is before us this evening is amending the CIP ordinance for fiscal year 2122, the year that we're currently in. The General Capital Improvement Ordinance is basically adding, as relates to the park, about $12,769 to the overall budget of the park. And that is what is being, as relates to this particular item. There are some other items here as well. But the General Capital Project Ordinance that is pending for next year related to Wheels, there is a, an amount in that proposal that we will be continuing to discuss as we develop the final numbers in the budget. I believe that number is about $1.5 million. That is part of, you know, estimated spending in design and, and planning for, for the facility. I do not think that, you know, final, final decisions, we are not anywhere near, far enough to have made final decisions. It is very, very important to us to engage the community around our amenities that, that, that are part of their commun, communities. We do have to put money in the CIP and project long-term, you know, dollars for what it may take to build it out. But I do believe that we continue to have conversations with the community. We hear the comments that have been made by our residents, and we take them very seriously.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. And thank you, City Manager Page. I was trying to get the question, the additional question in before you answered. But I, I just want to make sure that we're acknowledging, I appreciate Councilmember Capiero's recollection. I, I similarly recall it that way. We actually closed Wheels down for COVID. And so I think there was a lack of communication and understanding around, I guess, once it opened for testing and what have you, whether it would open up. And so there, that's where the engagement that I'm talking about is specifically missing. And so I just want to make sure that that's in addition, that's added to that list as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we, we understand. It, it did close in November of 20, November of 20, I believe, is when it closed for COVID. Don't remember the exact timeline as to when we purchased it, but it did close in November of 20 due to COVID.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions before we move to entertain the three items before us tonight on this item?
Just a, a question, Madam Mayor. If there needs to be a, a conversation or a vote in this matter, I just want to make sure that that does come back to us in some form and to, to hear what that might look like. Because it seems like there's some, there might be some dissension on whether or not the park should be open or not.
Let me, let me get some clarification on what you're asking. The three, we have the three items for our consideration tonight that, are you asking that they not be voted on? What, what exactly are you asking at this point?
So as far as the, the capital improvement, if we're not including funding to reopen the park, then if I vote no tonight, then I'm voting no because it's, it's not including that, is what I'm trying to make clear. If we're not going to reopen the conversation on whether or not the park should be open, then we're not having a conversation about whether that should be included in those funds.
Yes, we. So the city has never actually operated the park. We purchased the, the property from the previous owner after council made the decision to, to go forward and purchase that property. This General Capital Improvement Project Ordinance, it, it would not, it would not include operating funds for this, for this year, what you, what you see before, before you this evening.
Thank you.
Just so that I, just for the benefit of the three new persons who are really not knowledgeable in terms of- Just so that I, just for the benefit of the three new persons who are really not knowledgeable in terms of where you all have stood on operation. And we are having a budget presentation on Thursday where I believe that I, I was expecting to be able to receive some indication as to what we were going to be doing in the next year in terms of Wheels. Was, was that a bad assumption or a good assumption? From Durham Parks and Recs.
So Durham, Durham Parks and Recreation will be one of the departments that presents, and the council will be able to make inquiry of that, of that department around operations and, and planning for, for their budget. Budget, budgeted items.
All right. So I think we can reserve a lot of our questions for Thursday at the budget hearing, but we will proceed to our vote on the, or, I will proceed to ask to entertain motions on the three items tonight. So I am ready to entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the general capital improvement projects ordinance fiscal year 2021 and '22 as amended, the same being ordinance number 15820.
Move this red.
Second.
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Counselwoman Johnson. All those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. All those opposed would have the same right. That motion passes six to one with Counselwoman, I'm sorry, did you? All right. That motion passes in favor of five two with Counselwoman Hyman and Counselwoman Freeman are voting no. We move now to the second motion that I will entertain to adopt an ordinance, amending the Stormwater Capital Improvements Ordinance fiscal year 2021, 2022 as amended, the same being ordinance number 15822.
Move this red.
Second.
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tim and it has been seconded by Counselwoman Johnson. All those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. Right. All those opposed have the same. That motion, I believe, passes unanimously. The third item for our consideration would be a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Transit Fund Capital Improvements Project Ordinance fiscal year 2021 to 2022 as amended, the same being ordinance number 15825.
Move this red.
Second.
It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Counselwoman Caballero. All those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. All those opposed would have the same right. I believe that motion passes unanimously. We now turn our attention to item 31. This is a resolution supporting the installation of public art at select bus shelters and associated encroachment agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And that item has been pulled by Ms. Stella Adams. Ms. Adams, you have two minutes. Are there any other folks in opposition or for this item in the audience? You may proceed, Ms. Adams.
Madam Mayor, City Council, this is ridiculous. So we're going to, we're going to approach the depart- North Carolina Department of Transportation, asking them for easement so that we can put public art up in, in white communities with shelters, while people in, on Route 9 in Bragtown have to stand in ditches to catch the bus, have to cross the street while cars are zipping by on what we have been told is a North Carolina Department of Transportation road. But we're going to prioritize getting a memorandum of understanding from the North Carolina Department of Transportation so we can put public art in bus shelters when people don't even have a bus stop? They have to stand in ditches? I oppose this with every bone in my body. I am asking you on the behalf of the people of this city to do what is right. If you're going to ask for a memorandum of understanding for bus shelters, let it be for bus shelters on Route 9. Let it be for easements for Route 9, for Dearborn Drive. Let it be for the folks who are having to cross the street at Merrick Moore. Let it be for Route 1 going through Waltown. But it cannot be to put public art up in white neighborhoods. I'm not going to stand for it.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, for your comments tonight. All right, now we have, and I am now ready to entertain a motion.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
All right. Ms. Adams, thank you for your comments. And I, I understand what you're saying. I do, I gotta say this. We, we, as a city, do have to learn to walk and chew gum at the same time. And where I'm getting with that is, in the actual presentation that was provided today, in our transportation plan, the items that you mentioned are prioritized, and there is funding being proposed for those as well. So I don't want, I didn't want you to think that it was just this and not those items. We've been working extensively on prioritizing those items. And you'll hear a lot more chatter between the city and the county in asking for some, some support to make those things happen. But we've, we're not even asking for DOT permission on those things. We're going to make that happen locally. So I just wanted to just put it out. We'll, we'll definitely talk more about it. That's it, ma'am.
Any other comments? I do want to try to speak into this moment as best as I can. I do know that for the last six months and the entire time that, you know, I've been in pursuit of, of sitting in this seat, transportation has been very important for, for all of our residents. I, I've not yet run into one person where it isn't especially public transportation for a lot of our neighbors who have been disenfranchised in a lot of ways. There is also a side of me that knows too, though, that those, those, these are very, very complex issues that I am still grappling with. And how to make a lot of things happen at once, which nothing ever does in government. There is no way that I want you to think, Ms. Adams, or anybody in the public, that we are prioritizing public art over what we've seen and what we continue to fight for consistently, including this morning. Including out in, out in Reno, transportation has been a part of our everyday conversation amongst the city, the county, Gold Triangle, the NPLs, with two of us talking at a time, trying to figure out this very complex landscape. I do believe that we have to do both. I support, I've seen the art. The art, a lot of the art that has been proposed is by a lot of black artists who have been left out, as we know, in a lot of situations, especially during COVID, where there was not a lot of art put into, a lot of money put into art. So we're trying to do the both and. And there's no way you make them happen simultaneously. Because in that transportation arena, we're dealing with so many other issues. You know that we went on the bus ride purposefully to see what was going on in Route 9, and I have not forgotten that. And we continue to fight. Like I said, we, we fighting this morning. Our colleagues, along with our city, I had a 14-hour travel day yesterday. I would have been there. Our city manager, along with Councilwoman Williams, and I believe Counselwoman Caballero, were at the city this morning at their planning session with our transportation department fighting. And we're going to continue to do that. So please, we, we're not, we're trying to do the both and. We gotta do the both and. And I, I promise you that that's what I'm committed to doing, is making sure that we have it all. It may not come at the same time, but we're committed. And I believe that most of my colleagues are committed to doing the same thing. Having the best transportation system with all the beautification that we can have around to make life more livable and where we can travel to and fro wherever we are in this city. So with that being said, I am now ready to entertain two motions in regard to item 31. The first is to adopt the resolution supporting the installation of public art for select bus shelters located within the North Carolina Department of Transportation right away.
Move this red.
Second.
Removed by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Counselwoman Williams. All those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. All those opposed have the same right. That motion passes six to one with Counselwoman Hyman voting no. We now move to the second part of, the second action item for us for this item. And that is to authorize the city manager to enter into associated encroachment agreements with the North Carolina Department of Transportation as required to install and maintain the public art.
Move this red.
Second.
Removed by Mayor Pro Tim and seconded by Counselwoman Williams. I would ask those in favor, if you would sign by raising your left hand. Those opposed would have the same right. That motion passes six to one with Counselwoman Hyman voting no. We now move to item number 33, 2022, First Quarter Crime Report. And that has been pulled by Ms. Victoria Peterson. And you will have two minutes, Ms. Peterson.
Um, Mr. Mayor, you gave other folks anywhere between three to five minutes.
I've been keeping up time, Ms. Peterson.
I would still like the three, I would still at least like the three minutes.
Had the three minutes. This, we're not gonna, but you, I've been fairly consistent now.
Well, between three to five minutes, but thank you. Thank you. On what I want to share, I wouldn't even really be down here tonight if the police on your, Ms. Mayor, and I know you're new, and some of the other new city council members, so you will know in the future, when the police chief gives her report, he or she gives their report at the work session, that following Monday, they come and give the report to the full community. And so I've been here waiting for this police chief and the police department to give their crime report. Okay? And the police chief is not here. Now, one of my concerns is that, did she give you statistical information on your Part II crimes? And you knew, the new city council folks, you may want to write some of this down. It's very important that the police chief not just give you Part I crime, crime information, but you also need the Part II crime information. Because just as much time, and I have a criminal justice background, so this is one of the reasons why I'm sharing some of this with you folks. We've got to, even if you just focus on the Part I, if you do not focus on the Part II crimes, now, I do not know, but I know a few years ago, you had about close to 10,000 Part II crimes being committed in this city. We can no longer ignore the Part II crimes because they are very, very important. When a police officer goes out and, and somebody has committed a Part II crime, it takes just as much time to deal with a Part II crime as with a Part I crime. The other thing that I would like to ask, and particularly our new council members, Durham has a city council. We also have the sheriff department. We also have state government. We pay state taxes. Where is our state attorney general? Why is he not coming to Durham to help us address some of the crime that's going on in this community, as well as the state and the federal government? We also pay federal taxes. So I would like to ask our new city council folks and our mayor, Ms. Mayor, Judge O'Neal, which I'm sure that she has a lot of knowledge about crime. But we also need to get these other partners in here, in Durham, to help us to address some of the, at least the shooting and the murdering. The murdering, the murders of African-American in this community. It is just unbelievable about the young men and women on my street, over on Ridgeway Avenue. A few months ago, the young people, Ms. Freeman, that were shot, and one of those kids died.
Thank you, Ms.
Where was the governor? We haven't seen him. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
To the other city council members, and Ms. Freeman, thank you.
I do not believe there are any action item, action that is required for that. We will note Ms. Peterson's concerns to our police chief as well. All right. We will, just to be technically correct, we will entertain a motion to receive the 2022 First Quarter Crime Report.
Madam Mayor, so move.
Second. That has been moved by Counselwoman Williams and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. All those in favor, if you would raise your left hand. All those opposed have the same right. That motion passes unanimously. We now turn our attention to any other matters that should come before the council tonight. Counselwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There has been a lot of chatter about a lot of things. And I just wanted to, just let the community know we're listening. We hear all opinions. However, you know, I, I want us to be considerate also as a community. One opinion does not drive the direction of an entire city. And I don't believe that I or anyone else minced any words when we were running for these seats. And I don't think that we're mincing any words now. And the most formal way to address your opinion is when you vote. And I just want to be very frank. If you cannot specifically tell me how to stop black and brown boys from killing one another, then allow us to do the work to make it happen. And part of that is you engaging as a community. But I refuse to allow or accept the organization of any copy paste text or any misleading or misinformation or any of those factors to mislead people. We are at a pivotal time. And every suggestion that I We are at a pivotal time, and every suggestion that I've heard when it comes to public safety, for the most part, we are doing. And yet, violence is still increasing. And if we don't get a hold on it, it's going to increase even more. It's a method of percentage, and the higher the population, the higher the percentage will participate in violent acts. And it's not just the city council making a decision on one particular item. It's from city council, it's actually, it's from the community, to city council, to the county commissioners, to the DA's office, to the criminal justice system, to the state house, to the senate, to the government legislature, all the way to the federal government. When it comes to gun laws, that is the federal government. We are so limited in what we can do regarding restricting gun use or any of that at the local level. And I know we've been getting emails asking us to ban guns or the usage of them in the city of Durham. We can't do that. God knows, there's so much that I want to do, and I grew up hunting and, and carrying guns, but you know, we have a, we have a virus in this company, in this country beyond the pandemic. We have a virus and, and gun violence, from mass shootings to just random acts on a daily. And it, it is personal to me, and all about engaging, whether we agree or disagree, I'm all about engaging to really churn out this conversation and, you know, focus on the actual action steps. We don't know whether it's a good action or not until we try it. But for the audacity of someone to tell me what we should and should not do, I'm going to factor that as an opinion, and one opinion does not drive the direction of an entire community. So I, I, I'm very cautious on who is driving the narrative. I want to make sure that we can provide space for people to provide their thoughts. But come to me, come to your elected officials, let's have a conversation. I'm sick of talking to emails. Let's have a conversation, let's have a roundtable, let's actually work on some actions. And let's talk about what's best for Durham. Let's talk about, let's talk about what's going to happen in Durham. You say more social workers, we're doing it. You say unarmed officers, we're doing it. You say a task force, we're doing it. You say police, we're doing it. We're talking about crime, it's still happening. So I know it's late, but I, I just, this weekend, you know, I engaged with community members on what we're going to do about the crime, and someone stood up and they gave their passionate, you know, experience of what's happening in Durham. Then they looked down at the paper and they read talking points, and I heard them over and over and over tonight. And I've been reading them over and over and over in email. And I also took down a lot of addresses tonight, and I started looking at the map, and I was looking at where people live. Then I was listening to what they were talking about. It's affecting the entire community. But I promise you, I will always prioritize who is affecting the most. And everybody that was talking tonight are gone now. So I'm putting this on the public record for you to go back and rewind. Come talk to me. Let's have a conversation. Let's have a conversation. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, it is now 10:52, June 6, 2022. It is kindness month, this month and next month. Be kind. Bull City Strong, we are now adjourned.